The school board work session begins in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the school board work session begins in one minute.
Good morning, everyone. And I now call the February 6, 2025 administrative briefing work session of the Marion County School Board to order at 9:00 a.m. Please silence your electronic devices to avoid disturbing others. Mirroring and modeling how our students begin each day, I ask that you please pause with us for just a moment of silence. Please join me. Thank you. I now, good morning Attorney Powers. I now ask the school board attorney to explain the rules for this public workshop.
Good morning Chair Conrad, thank you. This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with Sunshine Law, the Board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The Board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form located in the lobby and hand it to the Board Clerk. After the Board and Superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the Board Clerk will call the speaker's name in the order received. Each speaker will have three minutes of time. As required by the Sunshine Law, the Board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout the meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules.
Dr. Gola, do we have someone that can...
Yeah, I was disappointed. Thank you. Madam Chair, I was disappointed with somebody in the audience, please go out and check.
Thank you very much. All right, good morning Ms. Martinez. Can you please provide the proof of publication for today's meeting?
Good morning. The notice for the February 6, 2025 work session was published in the O'Callaghan Gazette on January 31, 2025. Proof of publication has been attached to Board Docs under Proof of Publication.
Thank you. We will now begin the work session with the Superintendent's administrative briefing.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, please forgive the voice. It's just moving into the cough, another sinus infection, but it's getting better. So I want to mention a couple of things. I know we have another full agenda, Board, but I wouldn't be remiss if I didn't mention a couple of these items and some will come back up again next week at our Board meeting. Want to congratulate several of our schools for being recognized nationally for their success with magnet programs. As you know, Bellevue High School, Dr. N.H. Jones Elementary, Danellen High, and Howard Middle earned the Magnet School of Distinction honors this year. And there's a lot of work, a lot of work, to be recognized. It's a very rigorous process, very proud of the team and the efforts and what they're doing for students. And wanted to mention for Danellen High School, it's the fourth year in a row to be named a Magnet School of Distinction. So credible recognition for our schools and the great work they're doing. It is also National School Counseling Week, so a special thank you, as always, to our counselors and what they're doing for our students to help make sure that they get their needs met and they're on the correct pathway and have all the supports in place to be successful. I saw a few counselors yesterday out at a school and they're quite busy every day, so we really appreciate their work. As you know, it's Black History Month, so a lot more to come on that. We have a lot of events going on, stopping by one tonight at one of our schools. And so really appreciate everyone's recognition of how important this is in Marion County Public Schools. District will be closed on Monday, February 17th. It is President's Day, so we hope everyone enjoys the Monday. And I would be remiss also if I didn't say a special thank you to the team for the upgrading of the MTI auditorium, the lighting. You may not be able to see on the screen if you're watching, but in the auditorium, the seating is beautiful. It is illuminated in a much better way, a more professional way. Everyone can be seen and we really appreciate the very professional upgrade and much needed upgrade. I think it's been how many years? Decades? Decades? Decades of year? It's been decades since it's been done. I don't think it's been upgraded since the high school was here, is I think what I was told. So a long time. So thank you all for that great work behind the scenes. So if you are ready, Madam Chair, I'll move on to the first item. Okay, thank you. So the first item today is, as Mr. Ostonik is going to come forward, he is here. Board, as you recall, he's going to provide a bus fleet update. And Board, you had the opportunity to go out and spend time hearing from transportation team, the work that's happening, maintenance, and see for yourself what I've had the opportunity to see and tour that facility. So Mr. Ostonik is here as a follow-up with some more information and answer any questions you've had after today's presentation, of course, due to the tour you had an opportunity to participate in. Thank you.
And Board, this is a fairly short presentation, so I think we'll hold the questions and comments to the end. If that's good with everyone. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having me and thank you guys for coming out and visiting our transportation complex a couple of weeks ago. I think my team really enjoyed the fact that you guys were there and getting to kind of show off what we do and all the things that we offer for our school system within the realm of transportation. I'm going to kind of go through quickly here some things that we have shared with you guys during that trip. And then if you have any questions afterwards, I'll be more than happy to try to answer them. Our bus fleet that we currently have, I'm going to go through our numbers and talk about that right here. The recommendation for the industry standard of buses is to replace them between about 10 and 12 years old or 250,000 miles. Obviously, we have a very large district, so the mileage racks up very quickly when we're transporting 22,000 kids, morning and afternoon, within our district. Our current bus fleet has 341 total buses. Now, that number includes our boneyard, which are all our buses that we use for parts, and we have 31 buses within that realm. We also have the five activity buses. We have three training buses that we use to try to work with our new drivers to get them CDL certified. And then we also lease buses to O'Callaghan Charter School. And we have buses that we supply, two buses for Silver River Museum that we keep over there for getting kids back and forth during the day for their field trip for Silver River. Continuing on with our bus fleet by the numbers, when you take away those buses that are being used for other things, and when I say those buses, those are some, those buses are the older ones in our fleet. That moves us to 293 remaining buses, and there's still some within that 293 that are outside of that 10 to 12-year range of further age. You look here at the breakdown for the different sized buses we have, we have 47-passenger, 65-passenger, 83-passenger, and 77-passenger buses. Out of those, the 47-passenger buses, we do not use for the most part. It's, they are for extreme emergencies. And that's because of the capacity range that they have. Those buses are wheelchair lift buses and they're older and some of them don't have air conditioner, air conditioning in them. So we want to make sure that for our population that needs to have a lift bus, we try to make sure that they obviously have AC when we transport those students. And speaking of that, all of our main buses that we use that are assigned to a route have AC. Sometimes they have to be repaired. Obviously, you know, it doesn't work every day, just like our own vehicles. Sometimes you got to do a little maintenance on them, but they all do have AC in those buses. And you'll see on here, the main buses, we have the 261 of them, they're 77-passenger. Those are the ones that we use mostly. We do have 13 of the 83 passengers and those buses are between, they're 2004, 2005 buses. Those are your flat nose buses that you see. And they're actually require a little more specialty training to be able to drive those buses, but all of our drivers receive that training. If you look at this slide, it's just a fleet purchase by year. And you see it goes all the way back to 1986 for buses that we still have that were within our fleet. You'll see a large number on there for 2020. That's when the Board approved a purchase for 129 buses at that point, which was, from what I understand, I wasn't in this position, but it was a dire need at that point. So it's much appreciated. Where that comes into play now is when you look at our fleet, the best thing to do within the fleet would be to buy 10% of your buses, you know, turn your fleet over every 10 years. So every year, buy 10% of your buses. That's a large number. That's an expensive ask, and we'll talk about that in a couple of slides from now of how the price of buses has increased over the years. But to do that, to get 10% of our fleet would be about 30 to 35 buses that we would need yearly. And that would keep all our buses where we wouldn't have anything that's older than 10 years. And that would, you know, that would be ideal. We currently have 33 buses within our fleet that still have warranty remaining on them. And so that's, and we have 15 buses on order that we ordered for this year. Obviously, those 15 buses will have warranty, you know, factory warranty that's available to be used. We have a great garage staff that keeps our buses running and on the road. You know, they're whatever they can do to make sure that our buses are in place. They do, they try to work as quickly as possible. Our garage runs from 5:00 in the morning to 11:00 at night. And so we run a couple of shifts there and they're, as far as the main compound is concerned. And we also have a garage at each one of our main zones. You look at the bus cost comparison, this is what I was talking about a few minutes ago. In 2000, you could buy a bus for $49,000. Unfortunately, we can't even buy a car hardly for that anymore. And currently, the last buses we ordered were in that 100, approximately $160,000 range. That's a large jump. And even if you look from 2020, when we got our buses for $105,000, you know, there's a large discrepancy there. And I greatly appreciate, you know, the funding that has been put in place for transportation and for our bus purchases. But if you, over the last five years, we're only able to buy half of what we, you know, what we used to be able to pretty much because the cost is increasing at such a rapid rate. Moving on from our fleet, some of the things that we've talked about, I think in the last time I was here, I was asked a few questions about turn-by-turn directions, and so I want to talk about that. We have tablets currently on our buses, our routing software as far as meeting up for the turn-by-turn directions. And we lease those, the tablets are there, the Sura-Senovia. The routing software that we currently use doesn't allow us to do the turn-by-turn directions with the software that we currently have. And obviously, and those tablets have gotten older. We've had them for, you know, technology is, we've had them for four or five years now. And technology rapidly updates. So the turn-by-turn directions, if we were to move on to a company that would work for us now, which is Tyler, Tyler Drive is what it's called. They have multiple things within this tablet system that can be used. It has a dynamic run capability. You have unlimited users. It has electronic seating charts, electronic pre-trip inspections, driver attendance report, access to all routes and runs right there on the tablet. For, so if you have a driver that's filling in, they're able to use that information. They can type in the route, the route number or even the run for that route, and it's going to give them turn-by-turn directions. It's going to tell them what kids are on the bus. It's going to tell them if there's drop-off restrictions for a student, things like that for safety, obviously. But that's, when we talk about these things, they come with a cost. You know, so there's, the next slide, I think we'll talk about the cost a little bit. And this, instead of leasing the tablets, we would own these tablets with this company, but you'd be looking at a one-time fee upfront of $1,022,000 basically to get the, get the tablets, get them installed within all of our fleet, have the Wi-Fi tech capabilities and everything that we would need for this, all the wiring and everything. And then there's a recurring fee of $255,000 a year roughly in that range. I can tell you, we currently have about $180,000 a year that we currently pay. So there's an offset there on that aspect of it. But obviously, that's a lot of money. We currently use paper directions that are printed off for our drivers. So there's, there's a, we do need to move into, you know, the 21st century to be able to have GPS turn-by-turn navigation. But like I said, everything comes with an asterisk, and that's called money. The other question I was asked was about the stop-arm cameras. So I kind of did a little, little more research for that. We currently use Gatekeeper for our video systems within our buses, the stop-arm cameras. They have a stop-arm division. So I reached out to them and they had a, just to go over kind of what they offer and what they have. The state statute right now says that you have to, if you put stop-arm cameras on, you have to have them on both sides of the bus. So if you have to have them to catch the left-hand side and the right-hand side of the bus. Believe it or not, people actually pass on the right-hand side where the students are. You know, it's bad enough it's on the left, but they, how they can go on the side of the students is beyond me, but I've seen the video and it does happen. You also have to have an inter-local agreement with your police agencies and sheriff's office to do this, so there has to be a working relationship there. And with whatever the charge is, you know, for a citation, there's, there has to be a processing fee. The company itself has a $25 fee that they charge, and then there would be a portion of that pie that would go to the local sheriff's office for taking care of their processing part of the ticket also, or the citation, excuse me. Statute requires, like I already said, that statute just requires both sides of the bus to have a camera. And the camera systems can be purchased or leased, so we can buy them outright or they can be leased. I did it, when I did the pricing, I did it for 20 buses, because I think it's one of those things, I don't think you would want to put on the entire fleet, but if you had a small number and you could put them, move those buses to your hot zones, and then I think that would be, where, in my view, if we were going to do it, that would be the way to, to move into this stop-arm camera system. The purchase options are, if we were to buy outright for 20 buses, it'd be $113,000 roughly, a little plus, a little change there. And then the lease option for 20 buses would be $6,500 a month. So that's, and that covers all 20 buses. The thing to think about here, obviously, there's always, you know, there's always a few other things. Currently, we only have one technician that covers all of our electronics for our buses. And he's our, he covers the video equipment, the radios, all of that within our department. We are cross-training, because I'm a big believer in cross-training. So we have some mechanics that we, that go with him some and kind of learn what, what he does within his work and just so we have, we have a backup plan because that's just where we're at right now. So it's a, it's a large amount of material to learn. So it takes someone that wants to dive into it to be able to understand the complexities of the electronics on the buses. Oh, I forgot to skip over this slide so we could see the numbers there. And the last slide is just the garage tour. It kind of goes over the different things that we had a chance to look at whenever you guys visited on here. And like I said, it was, it was, it was a good morale boost for my team. I think they enjoyed the fact of seeing everyone and being able to kind of just, just show off what we do. And I appreciated that, so thank you guys very much for coming, coming over for the visit. That is it for me. If you guys have questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Happens, I never usually turn that off. Thank you so much.
Yes ma'am.
Look forward to any questions you have.
I just want to say thank you again. I know, I know this was said previously, but really enjoyed the tour, being able to see what you do right up front and what a great job your team does. So thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule for us to be able to see it up close and personal. And with that, I'll open it up to Board questions and comments. Yep. Board member throwing?
Sure, thank you. I'll start. Good morning. Thank you for the great presentation. And I just, to start off, I wanted to ask, how many students do we have riding the bus currently approximately, or how many are eligible? I know those are two different numbers.
Yes ma'am, we have about 22,000 registered riders. So morning and afternoon. FTE, we're in the middle of that right now. So we will get a number of what we have riding and then we compare that to what the FTE from, from the fall. And that gives us our, our exact number for, that we report to the state.
Okay.
So that's, we'll have that number here shortly, but it's usually around in between 21 and 22,000.
Okay, thank you. And to me, that just illustrates the importance of your department because almost half of our students are eligible to ride the bus and probably more of them are becoming daily riders because we're up to, what, 93% on-time delivery?
Yes ma'am.
From last week? So that's...
That number we're very proud of, by the way, from where, from where we started to where we're at right now.
Absolutely, and that definitely takes a total team effort. So glad to be a part of that from where I sit and keep up the great work. Anything we can do to help make our drivers and aides' jobs safer and more enjoyable is only going to benefit us because if the kids are getting to school on time, you know, and they're comfortable and the driver is too, then that just starts everybody off on a better day. I have a question, a couple of questions. My first one is about these tablets. Sounds like great technology and we all know that paper still works too, so there's a backup if a tablet for some reason doesn't work. What is their consistency of working in outlying areas, you know, like out in the forest and things like that? The connection?
Our connection for the tablets, I don't know, I don't think we have any dead zones that I'm aware of for them working. And I, I don't want to say that 100%, but I have not received a complaint on that at all.
Okay, that's really good to know because as we know, that wasn't always the case as the technology was first coming out. Updating our buses, those technology enhancements obviously are really important and also expensive. Just my comment on the, on the stop-arms, a couple of things. I want to commend the Sheriff's Department. You know, I'm out in the county and 27 West coming into town has just been a racetrack. And I've noticed lately that there's a lot more enforcement, you know, going on out there. So thank you to the Marion County Sheriff's Department for continuing to partner with us on those safety initiatives because enforcement is, is the name of the game. And, and I've heard from a lot of drivers that they feel that the stop-arms would be helpful and, and I agree, we should be doing a pilot on that. And just doing all we can to help the drivers know that they are supported. I know that it's going to take an inter-local agreement, and I would like to think that the Sheriff's Department would be up for the conversation to give that a try. And then my last question is, on the buses that would be supplied with these stop-arm cameras, are there also, would there also be little signs on the buses that motorists could see like, hey, you're on camera, you know?
Yes ma'am, there's state statute that has requirements as to what you have to place on the bus.
Right.
You have to, I think it's a 60-day program, advertising program, that you have to get out to our community so they know that we're doing it. So there's certain steps you have to follow.
Okay, because it just seems like fair warning and then maybe people will start slowing down if they see that. So those are the few things that are on my mind and thanks again for everything you do because if transportation's not successful, our district is not going to be as successful as we know we want it to be.
Yes ma'am, thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, Dr. Campbell?
Thank you. So we're having this presentation now because we are heading into budgeting. I know Ms. Boston Ellis, and you're probably looking for direction from the Board as to the prioritization of these financial opportunities that we have before us. Board, where I sit, the financial obligations that we have, this navigation turn-by-turn, I believe is imperative that we move forward with this expense this upcoming year. I was in one of our locations and I was watching in real time our dispatcher having to talk through the directions with a new, with a person who was filling in on a route, who was looking at their paper probably while they're driving a bus on a new route, and they were having to say, oh, no, no, you missed that, you missed that turn, or there's a, you know, right at that stop sign, you need it. And, and so they were having to, because they can see it at dispatch, they could see what the route was, but the person actually on the route could not. That, at that moment, I think I contacted, I was just standing and said, okay, so when, when are we getting this turn-by-turn thing going? So that is an absolute priority for me. I, I know that that's a high-ticket item as far as a million dollars for us just to find for this upcoming school year, but I believe that that's imperative and certainly if the Board has consensus, I think that that's a direction we should move forward. Another item that you were mentioning, and you told us this on the tour, thank you again for that tour that we had, that right now, we're purchasing about 15 buses a year. We really need to get to that industry recommendation of doubling that, really? That's a big, big ticket item. The way I see it, and Board, certainly this is open to conversation, the way I see it, we have a couple of mandated things we do with students. Educating them is obviously number one. We feed them, that's right up there with number two. And these things are obviously a part of state and federal law, but transporting them so they can be educated and fed absolutely is in that top three. You might even put transporting ahead of it because they have to be in school in order to be fed and educated. So I know it's going to take some strategy and I know it's going to take some idea generating of how we're going to work our capital budget to get on that industry recommendation, but I am up for the conversation. So wherever that needs to go, I believe we need to get there because transporting our kids is a top priority for this Board member. I can appreciate the stop-arm cameras. Um, I can appreciate the stop arm cameras. I, I have mixed feelings about them. I know it's a much lower ticket item than these other two items I've just mentioned, so I understand that. I can go either way, honestly. I'm not certain that the deterrent of the ticket is going to really get people's attention as much as we're hoping that it will pay for itself. And I don't know that that actually will be the case. And also, we know it takes that interlocal agreement with our local law enforcement and potentially also with, um, the F, um, Florida Department of Transportation. Uh, there's, there's just lots of things I have to, I know other districts are doing it, probably because it's a lower ticket item for them and they have a lot more students and they can absorb the cost more. Final thing I wanted to say is about career opportunities for students. I know I mentioned that when we were there. As we continue to enhance our dual enrollment in our career fields as well, and we are currently under construction with a diesel mechanic garage at Marion Technical College, we will have more opportunities for students who will be trained in earlier years to be that. And so, I'm looking forward to continued exploration so that students, if it starts with a field trip, which is kinda what we talked about, perfect. But I, I think the more opportunities that we have on our career signing day that we used to have, I, I would like for us to get back to that, um, but actually having a career signing day for our students as well and make sure we have plenty of students getting opportunities to come work for Marion County Public Schools upon receiving their high school diploma. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, Dr. James?
Thank you. First, it sounds so good in here.
It, I, I was gonna say...
Yeah, it sounds really good in here. So, um, I, I wanted to ask, um, there's not, so the bus fleet purchase, uh, which is slide four, you mentioned that we've already ordered the fifteen for twenty-twenty-six. Is that out of this year's budget or is next year's?
Yes, ma'am, we ordered them in, in August or September, right there off of, um, the budget for this year. But it usually takes a year from, for us to receive them.
Okay, okay. So, we budgeted fifteen for this year and Ms. Boston Ellis, you could just nod. Do we budget fifteen a year basically? Is that what's in our current budget or no? So, I don't, so the piece that I'm, um, if we're, if we're being asked to make a decision today, which maybe we are, maybe we aren't, the piece that I'm missing is the financial impact in our budget. What is the budget for transportation look like? And then what is the impact of these decisions? Because I don't disagree with Dr. Campbell on the necessity for the turn-by-turn and prioritizing these expenditures, but I don't see the whole picture. Um, I don't see, I don't have it handy what we budgeted for transportation this past year and, and what the impact of increasing our bus purchases and then this additional million-dollar purchase for turn-by-turn, what that, what that impact would have on the capital budget. And so, I don't know that I feel comfortable making a decision just yet until I can understand the impact it will have and what we're gonna have to, how much we're gonna have to move from other, cause it's a capital expenditure. So, we're gonna have to move, um, we're gonna have to build something less. We're gonna have to not do portables or not do wings, is the way I understand the budget, right? I see the heads nodding. And so, we're gonna be prioritizing some expenditures in transportation so that, and, and that will come from fixed buildings or portables for students learning. And so, it's just a complex conversation and I wanna understand how much money we're talking about and moving to be able, uh, to be able to really get there. So, I don't know if, yeah, I, I don't know if we, we could talk rough numbers or just...
Along with that, may I ask also if you can address Ms. Dobbins? Is Tyler the only company being considered for software hardware improvements? Are we gonna review our options with RFP or has that been done? Um, cause that, that's another question that we have.
So, I'll address, uh, Dr. James first and then let's let Mr. Ostonic address your question. So, a, as you're aware, yes, when we purchase buses or we purchase vans or we purchase certain white fleet, that money comes from our capital outlay budget. So, for the fifteen buses that were referenced earlier, we budgeted and you approved, um, just owe slightly over two million in the capital outlay budget this past year. So, we take with no changes to the cost of buses. If we're gonna look at purchasing thirty buses, then you're looking at an additional two million dollars. But as you, you know, buses are gonna go up, so, so probably a safe number would be budgeting four-point-five million instead of the two million. When you looked at that slide four, you saw there was a couple of years that we didn't purchase buses at all or we purchased very few. We also leveraged Esser dollars in the past to, to purchase some buses. I think it was around ten buses. Um, that was prior to us, our campaign and getting the impact fees and the sales tax. So, in, in, in light of those things, those become part of the revenue source that we will, would look at to get to that thirty buses a year number.
Okay, so we're looking at an additional two and a half million for buses, which would be, in a perfect world, an annual reoccurring expense, because of what I hear Mr. Ostonic saying is essentially we need to be ordering thirty buses every year to be properly replacing our buses. Is that kind of what I've heard you say?
Absolutely. If you recall on that slide as well, and, and Mr. Ostonic, I don't know if you wanna... Um, y- you saw a mass pers, purchase back in two, uh, twenty-twenty, uh, buses. If you, you recall, um, we took a loan to do that and we are still paying for that loan. It gets smaller each year, but again, um, that's not a practice that, that our team would recommend, at least from transportation and operations, because then not only are you paying for the bus, you're paying for the interest to that loan. So, we do wanna establish that rotation. If we look at thirty buses, we're gonna look at a reoccurring cost around four million plus each year out of the capital budget.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. So, we're talking about an increase of about two and a half million in purchasing of buses and then above what we've previously budgeted. And then we're talking about another million dollars, well, one-point-two-five million the first year and then a reoccurring two, two-hundred-and-fifty for the navigation.
And that, out of that two-fifty, we're already paying about a hundred-and-eighty for the tablets we have a year.
Oh, okay.
So, it's gonna be an offset there.
Understood, okay.
So, we're paying more, but there will be an offset, you know, so it won't be the whole two-hundred-and-twenty-five, cause we're already used to, are paying a hundred-and-eighty thousand a year.
Understood, okay. Those are just, I'm like a math visual kind of learner.
If I could chime in on that, however, that would not be capital funds, that's general funds. Capital fund is only for, for the buses, vehicles, the, the softwares and all of those purchases come out of our general fund.
Okay, from our like technology budget? Would it be under Mr. Ben Menudie's budget?
No, it's in the transportation general fund budget.
Okay, okay. Um, okay, well, I mean, I definitely agree with Dr. Campbell that we have got, we have, we have a lot of things we have to prioritize and so, and we have a lot of deficits. And so, we're trying to close a lot of gaps and that's, I think, the hardest part. And I guess that's why we're sitting here as elected officials, cause we have to decide what is gonna be the most precedent. But I do not disagree that we have to start making transportation a priority. I, I, I think this last year, we've seen such significant improvement on on-time arrivals and, um, even on-time dismissals. We talked about the nuances of like what that looks like, cause I feel like you're not doing yourself justice with how we're measuring that, because, you know, anyhow, but, um, I, I agree in prioritizing this. I just would love to see Ms. Boston Ellis explain or share, because we right now have buttoned up pretty much the sales tax, because we have all of these other big plans. And so, I don't wanna, if we're gonna use sales tax for this, then how are we, what are we getting rid of? And so, I just, I, I know Ms. Boston Ellis always says, yes, you can have it, but you gotta get rid of something else. Um, she always says, the answer's yes, but. And so, what are we gonna, as a board, have to let go of to get here? I guess is ultimately my question.
So, what you would see, Dr. James, is, as far as the capital outlay, we wait for the state to, to provide our, our budgetary numbers, which our department receives from Ms. Boston Ellis. And then in July, you would have that work session where we present the five-year plan. And within that five-year plan, you see the bus amount being allocated. And then you see all the projects that we're recommending funded and all the projects unfunded. So, it would be at that point, we would engage in those conversations to, to readjust priorities based on your recommendations as well. So, so let's say we put four-point-five million into transportation for, for buses in the five-year plan, but there was a project that turned out to be unfunded and you think would be a priority. Those things would be adjusted as we have those conversations in that work session in July. And then we bring back the final document for the five-year plan in, uh, September, which must be approved by October first.
Okay, thank you, I think I have a good understanding.
Thank you, Dr. James. Reverend Cummings? No comment at this time. Okay, um, oh, sorry, go ahead, Dr. Campbell.
Sorry, I just wanted to go back. I, I was curious about Attorney Powers' question and I don't think Ms. Ostonic answered it.
Okay, I, I'm gonna answer that the best I can. I'm not a technology guru at all, that's all, just so, I wanted everybody to know that upfront. Um, with that being said, we have Transversa for our routing software. Um, we're switching over currently to that. It's, it's, we, we, um, we've been in a lot of meetings and, and had, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes buildup to switch, uh, switch programs. So, we're in the middle of that right now. Now, that program, the, the waypoints, so that's how they decide where, you know, kind of the GPS tracking and all that. So, the waypoints are owned by, by, by Transversa. Um, they, to, to be able to have updated right now, we change a route, it's on the, it's on the, um, the tablet where you can see it on the bus without having to wait or anything, you have to use their, from, from their routing software to their program. Um, so if you use a different program, you gotta create all-new waypoints. You have, there's, there's, uh, a lot more that goes into it, so it, and it doesn't have, from my understanding, and it, like I said, this is a, a very rookie, um, understanding of, of, of technology, um, but you can't, um, take the waypoints from someone else and have the immediate updates like what we want for our drivers, if, if that somewhat makes sense. Mr. Powers, you're looking at me like you're, I'm trying to say, does that make sense or not?
I, I just mean, uh, is, is the reason we're sticking with the company is because they have proprietary software that we can't replicate?
Correct. They, that, that would...
But we, we have GPS coordinates for every bus stop in the, in the district. And we can provide tho, those GPS coordinates to an alternative vendor.
But, but it can't, the, the way, you gotta be able to pull it from your routing software. You gotta be able to pull it from your routing software and transfer it over to the, the software that's needed to be able to, to view it. Like, so if we change a route, you know, cause we change routes all the time. A kid drops, drops on, a kid drops off, and you can't take it from that software to just any program. And, and so you have to be able to transfer, theirs seamlessly does it. It transfers right in, there's no issues, no problems, there's no wait.
Okay, so, um, have we, is that something that we have considered an RFP process to find out?
I, I've, I've...
Other companies that can help us with that or is that, or, or, I mean, I, I guess the question is, how would we know if we haven't asked?
Well, I've looked into other programs, cause I was trying to find other programs that we could use. And when I asked, is this going to work, where if we get live updates, the answer was no for the, for the programs that I looked into.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you. And just speaking on the, um, cost of transportation, I know historically it has not covered our expense, the appropriation that we receive. And I believe, uh, that was probably, it pays about half. Okay, thank you CFO for nodding and confirming that. And while we're obviously grateful for the compression funds we've received from the state in the past, we are not the only district, according to my understanding, that, uh, suffers from this deficit. So, I'm thinking about when we're going up, um, Board Member Campbell, um, to Stark later or soon. And then also in our conversations, um, we can think about making this a priority as we speak to our legislators as well. And I think you had mentioned banding together with some counties through the coalition to unify that, that voice and that need, because it is a requirement for us to get our kids to school and, and get them to school safely and on time and have the right drivers to do it. So, that's maybe another opportunity to where we'll be heard and perhaps the appropriation will be increased and that'll end up being a cost savings across the board, I would think, eventually.
We know it's love. Okay.
Thank you. Um, I just have a, a quick question. And you explained this when we toured, um, the bus garage, but I wanted the public to hear. Back on slide one, um, where we were talking about, oh, actually, it's not slide one. Okay, about our warranties and the mileage, would you just go into a little more detail like you did for us, um, at the bus garage? So, the public understands how many miles, um, we put on buses in a year and a year and a half? And so, they have a better understanding of the struggle we're facing, just for being in Marion County?
Yes, ma'am. Um, and I think Mr. Grosselfinger, he, he was explaining this when we were over there, the fleet manager. Um, our buses, just like a car, you buy them and they're gonna have a warranty. Um, and, and your bumper-to-bumper warranty, and, and don't quote me on this, but say it's five years, a hundred thousand miles. Um, and, and so when you reach either one of those points, which we usually always reach the mileage before we reach the years, um, you're out of warranty. Uh, so the companies, if, if it's under warranty, they send out a technician, they fix it. If it's not something they can fix in the field or at our shop, they'll, they'll take the bus back to their main, main area or their main compound, which most of ours are in Orlando, Tampa areas. Um, they go down there, then they'll work on it and they'll send it back. Um, once it's out of warranty, then we do all the, all the maintenance, or I shouldn't say maintenance, we do all the repair work on the buses at that point. And, and, you know, so that brings to kind of another point that I didn't mention. You know, all of our buses are inspected every twenty-eight days. And, and we do that, um, to meet, our, our, um, mechanics, they have to receive a state inspector, um, certification. And they're, they go through it once every twenty-eight days, the bus comes in and it gets inspected and there's a, there's a long, um, list of things they have to go through. It doesn't matter whether it's, uh, seat belts, uh, make sure the seats are all tightened down, uh, make sure that the windshield wipers work, you know, all the maintenance stuff, the brakes, anything like that that's on the bus, there's a checklist for them to go through and, and make sure that everything's okay. Uh, but it's for, back to the warranty, um, it just, it, it, we usually run out, like I said, the mileage, cause our county's so big, much sooner than we do the years.
Right, so I think then the number that was shared, we're, you know, we're spending a hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars on a bus, which we're, you know, we don't have a lot of options on buying a new bus. But because of the mileage, um, that our buses drive every day, that warranty is out in about two and, two and a half years. So, that's the challenge. Um, I just wanted the public to understand that, yes, we have new buses, but our warranties are only lasting half the time that they're designed for. Um, so thank you for, um, honoring.
And our, our buses are on state bid, but also there's the three main bus companies, they provide a state bid and that's what they cost across the state, just so everybody's aware of that.
Okay, thank you. The other question I have is a little bit about technology. Um, and so when you're, when, when you're leasing tablets, um, do they get upgraded? So, I, how does that contract work? When you have tablets for four years, then is there a certain point where they get upgraded? How does that work?
They, they have not been upgraded during the time we've had them. I think you, you lease those tablets until we turn them back in.
Okay, and so you would have the option to start a new lease with an upgraded tablet?
Yes, ma'am. I, I believe you'd have to do a new contract and a new lease. Mr. Powers, maybe could answer that better than me?
Probably so, yeah. And the, the, the companies that we've worked with, with those, um, I'm trying to...
Senovia?
Senovia, right. Um, I, I think that overall, we're continuing, Mr. Ostonic's been good about contacting me and I've tried to help as much as I can with some of those items. Um, I think that when, when we're dealing with tablet replacement or tablet software, those leases are for a term, they're for a period. It's typically three to four years or they can be an outright purchase. Now, I'm not sure, I'd have to rec, recollect where we are with, with ours, I, I don't know.
I, I wanna say we're, um, we just redid a, a year, um, because it also, there's, the one thing it was in there, it also has Here Comes the Bus, the app for parents.
Right, right.
So, so there's that crossover there, um, that we have. This company here that we were talking about, part of it, they have their own app that's the same as, or, or very similar to the Here Comes the Bus app.
Okay.
And that's an example of where proprietary technology doesn't get in the way, because there's an identical one for a, a different need. So, we're, we're in good shape there, so. So, we're in good shape there, so. And I am confident that if they have any difficulties with those, we can work together to figure those out.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Osternik, thank you again to you and your team for the improvement of the on-time arrival. I really appreciate it. Wanted to ask you, and I hate to put you on the spot, and I know you may not know this directly, but as the board has this conversation, we talked about the 22,000 registered voter, uh, voters. That's really interesting, isn't it?
Riders?
Riders. I wonder where voters came from. But also, the whole context of being the fifth-largest geographic size district in the state. So, the complexities, if you think about how we're serving students, because of our distance, almost coast-to-coast, right? As opposed to an urban area where you have adjustments that can be made that are more easy to adjust, hopping off one bus to a nearby bus, those kinds of things. Have you seen any direct connection with distance because of the geographic size and impact on not just miles that was referred to on Page 1, but other items as well, in cost and wear and tear?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, when you look at maintenance items like tires and brakes and things like that, I mean, the more miles you put on them, the faster you're gonna have to replace them. And our district is so large, you have those issues. We've done some things, I think on the garage tour, one of the things everybody got to see, we've got a new machine for balancing our tires, and that's helping us, that's helping us increase the life expectancy of the tire, for the bus. You know, so there's things like that that we do to try to help, increase those life expectancies. But like everything else, it takes paper and ink. You know, it takes money, just to try to get those things done.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Osternik, and Ms. Dobbins, for the tour that we came on a couple of weeks ago. I'm just kinda backing up, just making sure, I'm wrapping some numbers around my head. Conversation that Dr. James and Dr. Campbell were saying about the 30 new buses per year is roughly about 4.5-
Yes, sir.
-million a year for 30 buses a year. That's 2025, correct? Because I'm looking, when I look at the numbers, I look at from 2020 to 2025, the cost per bus went up by $11,000 per year. So, I mean, it's gonna be much more than 4.5 million that we're gonna have every year coming from capital outlay. Am I hearing that right?
Yes, sir. It's, the bid for the state, the three main manufacturers, Thomas, Matthews, and International, they provide a bid yearly, and that's the price for their buses and equipment for that year.
Very good point. I think that, well, as we all know, back in 2020, what happened? We saw the increase in the cost of steel and a lot of other things. I think also, given our economic uncertainty in America, we could certainly see for vehicles a significant increase, and that's gonna impact that capital budget as well. And that's something that we're gonna have to monitor and assess. Fortunately, we do have the state bid to utilize as well. But I would suspect that we're gonna continue to see increases in vehicle cost. And just as Dr. Gullett pointed out, 22,000 students transported in Marion County is way more expensive than 22,000 students transported in a smaller demographic county.
And thank you for saying that, because I'm, the way I'm looking at this, that we're still growing, this county's growing, costs are gonna continue to go up. At some point, we won't be able to do 30 buses a year, or we're gonna have to drop to 20, 15, because we're gonna out-cost, it's gonna out-cost us, especially at the rate of per bus, like I said, just from 2020 to 2025, per bus, costs increase $11,000. I anticipate, just on the situation right now, that's gonna be much greater than $11,000 per year. You agree?
As a man of faith, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna hold on to faith that as our county grows, and we have implemented the sales tax, that also our sales tax revenue will also increase. Will it balance out? I don't have that crystal ball.
That was a great answer, Barb. You worked that one. That was good. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Dr. Campbell, one more.
Sure. Thank you for that conversation, Reverend Cummings. I actually had written this note and was just gonna wait until later to say it. But something else, also we have to keep in mind, I'm looking forward to having our first capital outlay budget conversation with impact fees, because we haven't ever had one of those. And as we are aware, currently, our impact fees are at 40%. I think in two years, we can revisit that conversation. And so, that is an opportunity, as our community continues to grow, potentially some of these capital outlay funding things that have been unfunded, it flips the script when we actually do have a revenue source now. We haven't actually heard how much money we're bringing in on that yet. But I think that at least is going to be an opportunity for a conversation. We will have basically a full year that we should have been collecting whenever we're having this capital outlay conversation. But I think as we continue to explore additional revenue sources, including talking to the legislature as well, my hope is we'll be able to continue on the industry standard of replacing at least 30 buses a year.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for a great presentation this morning, board. Thank you for some very enlightening conversation, and we will see you soon.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You have a great day.
You too. Is there any public comment? Okay, seeing none, Dr. Gullett, I think we're ready for our next presentation.
Yes, we certainly are. Thank you, Madam Chair. As you see, Mr. Ayers has made his way to the podium. He is going to present a couple of our correction, corrective action plans for our charter schools. Thank you, Mr. Ayers.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Board members, Dr. Gullett, Attorney Powers, and Ms. Martinez. Florida statutes and state board of education rules require lower-performing charter schools to develop and implement strategies to raise student performance. The director or principal and a representative of the governing board of a charter school that earned a grade of D or an F shall appear before the sponsor to present the information concerning deficiencies. The director or principal and a governing board representative shall submit to the sponsor for approval an academic corrective action plan to raise student performance. O'Callie Charter High and McIntosh Area School are here this morning to present their academic corrective action plans. The plans were uploaded to Board Docs prior to this meeting. I would like to now introduce Ms. T.C. Matthews, Executive Director of Clear Choice Academies. She has with her a board member, and she will present the academic corrective action plan pro Callie Charter High.
Good morning.
Good morning, T.C. How are you?
Good, thank you. Chairperson Conrad. Board members, Superintendent Gullett, thank you. It's always a pleasure to speak in front of you. Not always on this topic, mind you, but nonetheless, I feel confident that we've put a plan in place that's going to continue to accelerate the academic success of our students. You all received my report, so today I'd just like to focus on three really important areas where we have placed a lot of our attention. So, the very first being our strategic planning and staffing. And I feel like I'm gonna be preaching to the choir a little bit, but you know that our school grades are directly correlated to the success of our teachers. Highly qualified, highly impactful teachers who motivate students and insist that students master content is where we find our greatest success. And so, as we look at hiring people for the O'Callie team, we began to really focus on the best of the best. And part of doing that was to bring onboard benefit packages that were similar, albeit not quite exact, to that the school district offers. And so, this was our first year of really offering those types of services for our staff. And so, we looked to get the best of the best in there, because in all honesty, if you have a great teacher, nothing else matters. Technology does not matter, facilities do not matter. What matters is that we have strong teachers in there, and they are focused on mastery of content with our students. We also were able, we actually only brought over two teachers with us this year from our last year's staff. So, we retained two of our teachers, both of which were highly effective teachers. And then we were able to hire more teachers to come onboard. I feel like we got three really strong ones. But as you know, one of our challenges in the world of education right now is finding people to hire in the capacity of an educator. And so, we had a couple of newbies that we had to bring on as well. And we've implemented a couple of different approaches to ensure that those new teachers are very deliberately focused on content mastery. I tell our teachers all the time, "We pay you to ensure content mastery of students. We don't pay you to argue with students, to deal with bad behavior", all of those sorts of things that can derail the academic success of our students. And so, working with brand-new teachers, many of whom have never had any coursework on how to be a teacher, which is just so foreign to me, because that was my whole coursework, right? But really helping them to understand classroom management. And that takes us into our next point of really, like, laser focus on a concept that came from my childhood. My daddy ran Morrison's Cafeteria. I think you guys know that. And so, when you're running a restaurant, you have to keep an eye on the pennies, or you'll lose the dollar. Actually, I look back, because you guys do that as well, right? If we don't keep an eye on the pennies, we're gonna lose the dollars. And the same thing goes for classroom management. If we don't keep an eye on the tiny insignificant behavior derailment that students do in a classroom that keep us from our instructional time, then we begin to lose the dollars, and the dollars are academic success. So, we've really focused with our teachers at both schools on really redirecting those tiny behaviors so that we're not losing instructional time. And so, that also helps us to keep away from the dollars. So, we don't, I'm gonna knock on some wood here, fights aren't happening at O'Callie. They're just not, because of the way that we're managing both of the schools, but specifically for your interest today, the high school. And so, part of that is keeping a real handle on just the derailing of instructional time and being true to the work that we're doing, and that's mastery of content ultimately, and building relationships, right? And then the last area that we know to be true is, and you guys are gonna chuckle, because this one's a doozy, student motivation and parent engagement, right? And so, how do we motivate, and here's the thing, at the high school level, it's not even, I mean, yes, it's about our school grade, but it's more about high stakes. You don't pass that algebra exam, and you don't pass that 10th-grade ELA. Those two things are checkoff points for your high school diploma. And so, really helping students of that age bracket, people of that age bracket, to understand what doors will close if you don't get a high school diploma, and why these tests are so important in order to prove that you've mastered content to the level of acceptability to get your high school diploma. We had several students last year who, you could look at their scores over the years, and it's gone down, right? They were a four, they were a three, they were a two. And so, we talked to them after, actually, the beginning of this year, "What happened here?" We had several students say, "Oh, I just didn't, I just didn't do it." "Excuse me? What do you mean, you just didn't do it? Well, what's the big deal?" "Uh, your high school diploma's the big deal." I had two of those take the test in the fall, because they get retakes, they got fours. So, helping kids, and I think really the reason we feel it, we have 25 kids taking that test. You guys have thousands of kids taking that test. 20% of them don't care about it? That's a problem. And so, really working in student motivation to understand, and it really is about their life path and their success. You have to pass this test. This is super important, and it's not just something that's gonna go away. And then with that is parent engagement. You all know that parent engagement sometimes falls off at the high school level. And so, we've developed a lot of programs to bring those parents in and to help those parents continue to be part of their students' success. I will tell you this, this year, we are still only 9th, 10th, and 11th. So, we will not be receiving, as we did not last year, we will not be receiving the score for graduation rate or the score for acceleration rate. That makes it challenging. But we're doing everything in our power to get those learning gains up, because I think that's where our success lies. Questions?
Board, yes, Dr. Campbell?
Good morning.
Good morning, Dr. Campbell.
I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to make a comment to say missing those learning gains is something that I noted all throughout your report, because when you think about it, this is your baseline year, T.C. And so, knowing how data works, having a baseline is a baseline. And so, once you have that, which in a first year is all you've got, then you really can't go anywhere but up in a lot of ways. And so, I'm grateful for the work that I know that you and your team have put in to this plan, a very detailed plan that I read through, and just looking forward to continued growth. I appreciate that we do have an alternative, small high school that is a public school, public charter school here in Marion County. And I know a couple of families there that love that we have that option for their students as well. So, just kudos. I'm looking forward to you not having to come back before us in this particular capacity in the future.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Campbell.
Yes, Dr. James.
Thank you. And I will say, I wasn't, I was a little disheartened, but not surprised when we got your school grade, because school grade is one big math equation. And when your denominator is small, and I say this about some of our smaller school sites too, when your denominator is small, the math is really hard to manipulate. And part of school grade is figuring out, you know, you have students who maybe are historically are underachievers, and so, you could maybe go in and you do a little math predetermination to try to figure out where you're gonna fall. And so, the smaller your denominator is, and the less subgroups you're able to represent in that big calculation, the harder it is. And so, I fully believe that your grade was a reflection of your denominator. And that was all it was for me, understanding that the work O'Callie Charter Middle has done and continues to do, and the students that they are producing, and understanding the connection and the bridge that's going to come from the middle school to the high school. I don't foresee this being a consistent issue with O'Callie Charter High School. It may be an issue again this year, if we're being transparent and honest, because the math is the math, and it's really hard when you're missing grad rate, when you're missing acceleration points. I mean, those are, acceleration points, to me, is the easiest bucket to get lots of points in, because there are a variety of ways students can get acceleration points. And so, not being able to work within that bucket is already a huge downfall. So, I understand and appreciate where you guys are from a numbers perspective. And I imagine as your population grows and as you're able to fulfill all of the buckets, we, I expect that we are going to see a successful high school that matches the performance of the rest of the high schools in Marion County. Thank you. I do want you to know this, though. Ms. Brown and I take full responsibility for this grade, and I appreciate that you identified that the mathematics were against us, but we do not take this lightly. And I want each and every one of you to know it is our commitment to always provide the highest level of academic excellence for the students that make a personal choice to go to our small school. I think all of our high schools in Marion County are doing an amazing job, and I think we serve a very important little niche that will enhance Marion County School District. So, thank you for seeing that, but do know, we do not take this lightly, and we hope that you will be correct in saying that these scores will go up. Yes, absolutely. And I appreciate you guys taking ownership, because ultimately, that's where the buck stops, right? But it's, the first year is the hardest year. And honestly, you know, when you, Monday morning quarterback it, could you have opened with all of your grades and taken, opened your charter up and allowed all students to enroll, potentially? Because that would have allowed you to manipulate the school grade a little differently. But if that wasn't the way you wanted to build the culture at your school, then you wanna look at that too. So, I appreciate the walk you all are walking on, and I think that it's going to, I know it's going to be productive.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews.
Thank you, Ms. Mathews, for the presentation and for, number one, for me, the accountability. That shows that things are going to go in the right direction. And as Dr. James has stated and Dr. Campbell stated, those acceleration points, the grad rates, all those things are just growing pains. And so as you grow, as we, as the school grows, you're in year one. So as it grows, we expect that it will get better. But I appreciate the accountability and I do believe that you may have to come back one more year. I hope not, but if it does, we know why. And so we're going to work, our district is going to work with you because you are meeting a certain niche of kids that are not going to do as well in a traditional high school. So we do need you around. So thank you again.
Thank you, and it's always great to see you in whatever capacity because you're so authentic and authentically committed to student success. You know, from my view, this, our school district has a great reputation for supporting our public charter schools and understanding the nuances of some years being more successful than others and doing all we can to hang with you and support you. And you're just out of the gate and you're going to hit your stride. You've got a proven formula as evidenced by O'Callie Charter Middle School. And I too am very grateful that there is this option available for students and families. And so that's what I have for you.
TC, I just want to say I'm always happy to see, no matter what you're presenting to us, because the word authentic is just so true for you. It was as a parent in elementary school and as a leader of our charter school. And so I just thank you for the work that you're doing and your sincere investment in the students that choose to attend your school. So thank you for being here. Thank you for your presentation. I look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, may I make a comment while Mr. Ayers is coming forward? Appreciate charter schools that are here. I wanted you board to know that our charter school leaders participate in our principal meetings too. So it's nice that they come and they participate all together and are part of that professional learning community. Just thought you should know that.
Thank you for sharing that. Yes.
Tuesday was excellent, by the way. Thank you to your staff because we get so much information from that and the inclusivity that you provide us is really necessary for us to be successful. So thank you. Thank you for engaging. Thank you.
I had it written down, but I didn't say it before, that the corrective action plan presented by O'Callie Charter High does meet the requirements of state board education rule. And I'm going to come back after and talk again after I introduce Mr. David Friedlander and staff. He is the principal of McIntosh Area School. He will present the corrective action plan for McIntosh Area School, which also meets the requirements of the State Board of Education rule.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers.
Do we need to do public comment?
I was going to do it after this one.
Oh, okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Dr. James, Mrs. Thrower, Reverend Cummings, Dr. Campbell, Mrs. Conrad, and Dr. Gullet. It's a pleasure, under these circumstances though, to present you with our academic improvement plan that we've submitted to you. You do have it. So I'm going to keep my comments brief. This is Mrs. Beals, who's our curriculum coordinator and AP as well. So she'll assist in any answering questions as well. The 2023-24 academic year was the third year of the new Florida standard and the McIntosh Area School received an F grade for the 23-24 after receiving a C the year prior with the new standards. The size of the overall student population and enrollment per grade critically affected our school's results. For the 23-24 academic year, a total of 46 students enrolled within the year. Of this population, only 12 students from third through fifth grade counted for the overall school grade and were assessed cumulatively as one proficiency component and were not eligible for inclusion in the other scoring components per state requirements. Additionally, the student population was not high enough in each grade to allow growth to be considered in the overall score outcome. Despite these factors, MAS analyzed individual student performance and progress across all grade levels and that analysis revealed gaps in performance we needed to address. The leadership team has intensely focused on these gaps and implemented adjustments to personnel, curriculum, student support, family engagement, and school day changes, schedule changes to address the deficiencies and raise that standard across the entire school population for 24-25. So you do have our report and certainly I don't want to, there's a lot of detail, a lot of data in there. But just moving forward, I just wanted to make sure that we brought out the fact that we have made tremendous strides in our 22-23 academic year where we turned around that student performance from an F to a C. We are very proud of that, but significantly disappointed we did not sustain the success the following year within the 23-24 year. In retrospect, we were not able to overcome the new student influx that brought significant needs to MAS identified after the PM1 or PM2 assessment coupled with score tabulations not allowing for growth for smaller school populations. However, we still, we are using our tutoring, remediation, and skills reinforcement strategies to overcome the significant inherited shortfalls and we are prepared for this moving forward. We do take that, we don't take that lightly, as was mentioned previously. However, we also are looking ahead to the future to make sure that our students are getting the resources, the instructional strategies, and the quality of education that they deserve. Academic deficiencies will be, will continue to be a concern moving forward. We recognize that due to absenteeism and systemic losses as a result of a loss of schooling during COVID. While we acknowledge this fact, we do not accept it. We do not accept the fact that we cannot get our students back on track with the standards and grade level expectations. We continue to incorporate effective instructional strategies and use tools and strategies to strengthen our academic rigor, assessment, staff instructional techniques, and overall student achievement goals. We are committed, as we have always been, to educating and nurturing both the academic, social, and emotional growth of each and every student at our school. To assist in our plan, we have also looked at enhancing our student enrichment with art club, running clubs, theater clubs, and have a new Boy Scouts of America sponsored Cub Scout pack for our families up in McIntosh, in that area. These enrichments augment the student-to-ego life experience while also increasing student enrollment for learning and family engagement. The 23-20, or 24-25 student body enrollment is currently at 45. And of that population, 44% are new to the school. I also would like to add at this point that out of that population, approximately 25% of our students have either an IEP or a 504 plan. While the same student body for true continued growth for comparison is difficult, we nevertheless have PM1 to PM2 promising gains due to student-staff hard work, parent engagement, tutoring, interventions, and remediation. As we present this plan, we have the benefit of being able to report on the status assessment of our action plan at mid-year. So we have made gains in those areas and we will continue to look forward to the future. And as I said, you have our reports and now I'm just going to allow, you know, provide you with that opportunity to ask questions.
Right. Yes, Dr. Campbell.
So I'll just ask the first question and then I'm sure there will be others. Because I'm not looking at your report, I'm actually looking at your, at the district-wide 100-day membership count. So while I certainly appreciate 45 students, you actually only have 15 that will be tested that are in grades three through five. I'm looking at, this is the 100-day count again, six third graders, four fourth graders, and five fifth graders. Is that correct? Or has something changed since?
Actually, 14 that will be, it's 14 that will be.
14 that will be tested, okay. So that's more of a comment than a question, but I'm grateful that you clarified because I start to see issues just from previous conversation we had as far as the math, mathing. And I'll let Dr. James take it from there as she's leaning forward because I love the fact that we have continued to discuss that the attendance, the enrollment challenges that you have experienced and the fact that you do have 11 kindergartners and 12 first graders. It seems like you're on a positive trend potentially, but in these upper grades where your school grade counts, 14 students is going to be tough to get to the level that needs to be.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Yes, Dr. James?
Yeah, thank you. I was, I was going to highlight what I said to the previous presenter, which is the denominator is the struggle. And I think the denominator has consistently been the struggle, at least for the last couple of years, for you all because there is not a lot of students to maximize your school grade. And also, as you said, you can't even participate in every bucket of the school grade calculation. So inherently, you're going into school grade already hamstrung to very tight requirements. And so then, when you couple that with the unique demographic that you serve, you're putting, where we are collectively putting you in a position where it is going to be hard to be successful based on school grade. And I wish school grade was not calculated the way it was calculated because it is not a reflection of the work that happens on our campuses. Oftentimes, we see schools that are underperforming, but if you walk into them and you walk into the teachers' classrooms and you see the work they're doing, you are, you're seeing so much potential and so much is happening. And sometimes, like just this morning, we had a student outside, many of us heard, right? We have students coming to our campuses every day that are experiencing such significant need that sometimes meeting their base level human needs is what's most important on that day. And so, because if they're not fed, if they're not well taken care of, if the trauma that they're bringing from their home is not addressed, then we are not ever going to be able to educate them. Because if you're in fight or flight, you're not even in a space to receive education. And so school grade doesn't take any of that into consideration. And the board is, that is our metric. We don't get, we don't get to use something else. The state comes to us and says, these are the schools and this is, and we have an ESE situation we have to deal with as a district ourselves because we have underperformance in many of our schools for ESE as well. So I think it's just a series of unfortunate math dilemmas that has put us here. And I do have concerns about what the school grade will look like for you all this year and what that will mean for this board for next steps. Transparently, I think that that conversation has to happen because I'm not sure that we can continue, we'll be able to continue to offer the charter if the charter is, from a school grade perspective, not succeeding. And so those are, those are the concerns I have maintained. And I, you know, I pray that we're going to see, like, oh, back out? That was weird. Academic success, but we're just going to have to see how it all plays out.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. James. Reverend Cummings or board member Thrower, anything to add? Sure.
I'll just say that it is a tremendous challenge that you guys have. And there is the wherewithal where you're continuing to do your best to serve the kids that come to you and provide an authentic education to them. Where it gets really hard as a school board member is, you know, at this local level, is that there's a whole another layer of bureaucracy that we have no say over. And correct me if I'm wrong, and I don't even want to speak this into existence, but I believe it's a fact that if a, if a school fails two years in a row, then the state does their thing and it's not pretty. And I've been around long enough to know how important McIntosh Area School has been to a significant but small number of learners that were getting left behind. And so that is the heartbreaker, you know, for me as an educator, knowing and understanding the challenge that you're under, pulling for you every step of the way. You know, you're serving kids that need to be served, just like any other kids. And so I'm just going to keep the faith that this is going to work out and we'll just continue to support and go from there. So thank you for coming down today and please get back up there and continue to do all you can. Thank you.
Thank you. You will.
I know you will.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. I really can't say it any better than my fellow board members, but we appreciate you being here today and presenting your program. We wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment on the O'Callie Charter? Oh, so Mr. Ayers is coming forward. He's giving me the finger. Not that finger, a different finger, but a finger. Sorry.
I apologize. I just.
No, that's okay.
I appreciate the charter schools that they've come out. I think the board has identified the unique features that each charter school is facing. I just want to talk about next steps that is state statute required and state board of education rule. They will be monitored and continued monitor like we always do to make sure they're adhering to their plan. When next year's school grade comes out again, we will then monitor again. And for a school that receives three consecutive grades below a C, they will continue to have to come every year to do a corrective action plan. On their third year below a C, they have to do an improvement plan, which is similar to what we had to do with Evergreen where there's three options that they do. Hopefully, we don't get to that point. If a school gets to, as Mr. Thrower mentioned, two consecutive Fs in a row, then the state will cancel the charter on that aspect.
Just, yes, Dr. James.
Is the charter canceled at the conclusion of the school year? So what are, what is, what are the, for what's best for students, right? So school grade comes out whenever the state feels like it, but this year it was in July. So what does that look like?
Well, actually, this year, the final school grade after all appeals, it was in October when that happened.
True, okay.
It's very clear in state statute and state board. They cannot act until not only final grades are officially released by the state, but all appeals have gone through. So we can predict, you know, what possible school grade can be after PM3 comes down because we'll have those scores. But the state will not take action on anything until this final rule. That's why normally we would come earlier in September to do the academic and correction action plan, but we didn't receive the final notification from the state till December, which means after all appeals happened.
So then, understanding that, does the state take immediate action or is it action following the conclusion of the school year that those students are in?
My understanding is it's immediate action by the state.
So then, when we have our preliminary numbers as a district, will we, how will we navigate that to best for the students? So if there were to be an F again, potentially, how do we navigate what's best for those students and getting, because transitioning mid-year is also not very conducive.
Unfortunately, state statute is very clear on the ways that a local board can terminate a contract. And a local board cannot terminate a contract because of the predicted school grade. Termination of contract of double F comes from the state and that's after all appeals have taken place.
What I mean is communication with families. So is, is there, are we allowed to communicate with the families of what the projection looks like? Is that something that they would do on site? I'm just thinking for the families for potentially changing their student prior to school starting, right? If they, if they see the projection and they want their child to have a conducive learning environment?
Well, upon, under 1,002, and I'm sure Mr. Ayers can correct me if I'm wrong here, under 1,002.399 and 3, that's the provision that says that a charter school automatically terminates after the two consecutive F grades. And then further down within that, it actually outlines that an independent audit starts 30 days after the notice of non-renewal termination. And then also, each charter school's governing board must appoint a representative to facilitate parental involvement, provide access to information, assist parents with questions, concerns, resolve disputes. It sets out a laundry list of actions. It, it sets out a, a laundry list of actions that have to happen on a schedule.
Okay.
Is that fair?
Okay. All right. Anything else you want to share with us, Mr. Ayers? All right. Thank you for joining us this morning. It's always good to see you. Is there any public comment for Ocala Charter High School? Okay, seeing none. Do we have any public comment for MacIntosh Area School? All right. Thank you, Dr. Gullett. I think we're ready to move on to our next topic.
Terrific. Thank you, Madam Chair of the Board. Today, our last scheduled item is, is an update for you on our year-round pilot. As you know, we're one of very few districts in the state that are providing a innovative pilot for year-round at Wyamina Park for us. So, Mr. Fraser is here just to provide you an update on how that's going. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Fraser.
Good morning, Chair Conrad, Vice Chair Cummings, Board Members and Dr. Gullett. I'm excited to share with you an update on the mid-year progress of our five-year pilot of our, what the state coined as year-round, but it's really a non-traditional calendar at Wyamina Park Elementary. So, the first slide that I would direct your attention to is our fast data comparison from our 2023-2024 school year to our 2024-2025 school year for PM1 and PM2 for our English Language Arts. As you can see, for the overall proficiency level for grades three through five, for the 2024-2025 school year, there started out at PM1 at 12% and increased by 8% to 20%. This school year, overall three through five proficiency began PM1 at 15% and increased 10% to 25%, showing a 5% increase in proficiency of all grades three through five in English Language Arts. In third grade, I would direct your attention, they began in 23-24 at 11%, making an 8% growth in third grade in proficiency. This school year, starting at 7%, increasing by 10% to 17% in third grade. In fourth grade, beginning 23-24 at 9%, increasing 13 percentage points to 22%. And then, in 24-25, beginning at 25%, increasing 7% to 32% overall. Grade five began 23-24 at 17%, increasing 3% to 20% proficiency. 24-25 began at 18%, increasing 13% to 31% proficiency in fifth grade. So, overall, if you look at a cohort-to-cohort trend, we are seeing an improvement in proficiencies across grades three through five. The next slide is the three through five comparison for proficiency in math. Beginning, overall three through five proficiency began in 23-24 at 3%, increasing 10% to 13%. The beginning of this school year, they began at 3% overall proficiency, increasing 12% to 15%. Third grade began 23-24, PM1 at 4%, increasing 11% to 15 percentage of proficiency. Third grade began this school year at 1%, increasing 13 percentage points to 14%. Grade four began 23-24 at 3%, increasing 5% to 8% proficiency. Beginning this school year, PM1 at 7% proficiency, increasing seven percentage points to 14% proficiency. Grade five, beginning at 3% proficient in 23-24, increasing 11% to 14% proficiency. 24-25 began this school year at 2% proficient in fifth grade, increasing 15 percentage points to 17% proficient overall the course of PM1 to PM2 growth. As we look at Wyamina Park and looking to continue to improve for overall learning gains and proficiency from PM1 to PM2, we do have student-specific action plans for all grade levels in third, fourth, and fifth grade, looking at our lowest quartile students, looking at our individual subgroups that were under 41%. Currently, if the school was able to capture all of their Verge students, which in ELA we would, we would look at that being a seven to 10 percentage point gain for them, seven to 10 points from PM1 to PM2, their possible school grade sits at 52% of their overall points, putting them two percentage points away from a B. And so, there's a lot of potential there moving from PM2 to PM3.
Chair, is it possible to ask a data question real quick?
Absolutely.
So, I heard you say cohort comparison, but I want to make sure I understand the table as presented because it looks, it looks really promising and very productive. But if we go back to slide one real quick, cohort, cohort data would be that, I'm assuming grade two is at the top, is that correct?
No, it's grade three. It's just the overall grade level proficiency for three through fifth.
Okay, okay, got it. So, if I'm looking at the 8% for grade three, or if I take it to the 19%. 19% for grade three and 23, and 23-24 goes to fourth grade's 32%, right?
Correct.
And so, I just wanted, and 19 to 32 is not a 7% increase. So, I heard you say the word cohort, but I don't think the data is, in this chart, is showing cohort data.
Right.
Okay. So, I wasn't trying to like, correct you, I just want to make sure that that's clear because from a data perspective, the students in third grade in 23-24 who were 19% proficient in PM2 are now the 32% for PM2. And then, if you go to grade four, it's 22 to 31%. So, when we're looking at their PM2 data from a cohort perspective, that, that would be what we're looking at.
Yeah, correct.
Which is also very promising because what it's showing is the students are showing significant gains, not just from PM1 to PM2 in their current grade level and from comparing third graders now to third graders last year, but we're also seeing the student as a whole human is improving academically across the entire cohort. And we see it, I mean, we, math is a little bit less productive than ELA, but we're still seeing pretty consistent data, at least in math, on improvements.
Absolutely. It's also important to note that for our ELA benchmarks, we've taught all of them by mid-year. And so, at this point, it's all, we're going back through all of those benchmarks all throughout from PM2 to PM3, which is where we usually see some pretty significant gains. But very important to note, like, whenever you look at 23-24 for PM1, they started third grade at 11%. They started fourth grade at 25% proficient.
Correct.
So, quite a bit of gains in regards to where they were starting and, of course, where they were able to make in regards to growth measures as well as overall proficiency.
Yes. And I think it's speaking to the work we're doing in the summer. Because starting, starting third grade at 11% and starting fourth grade at 25% is significant. And that's speaking to not just the work we're doing during the school year, but the work we're also doing over the summer to prevent summer slide. So, it, the ELA specifically looks very positive, and I think most of us would agree that ELA is the foundation for all the rest because math, the math test is now a reading test. It's just, you have to read the math, but same for science. And so, it's very promising that our ELA scores are improving with such consistency because it's putting us in a better position to be more successful in the other subjects.
Absolutely. We're very proud of the, the staff and the students at Wyamina Park. They're, they're really working hard every single day. And if they continue to monitor, which they are, there are student-specific action plans that they have in place for individual students, and the possibility that they have the potential to get to a school grade calculation of 52% of their overall points is very encouraging considering last year, they were sitting as a school grade of a D according to our Florida School Accountability System. They moved out of that D into a C. We started our first-year pilot this year. Now, we're seeing significant progress as well. So, we're certainly hopeful and will continue to work that plan to make sure that we see every child moving forward. And these are just proficiency numbers. These aren't looking at learning gains overall as a whole or lowest quartile, so there's a, there's a lot of possibility and potential at Wyamina Park that we're very excited about.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So, the next slide that we'll take a look at is really looking at attendance data comparison. The first that I'll draw you to is in 23-24, we were sitting at a total enrollment of 586 students. This school year, we had 513, which is 73 fewer students than we had. When we look at that overall as a whole, and students have been transferring in and out of Wyamina since the beginning of the school year, we have some students that didn't start when we first initially started in July, who either elected not to start school until we started on August, in August, or that have moved into the area and came in. And so, we've worked with our student information reporting to make sure that we have those students coded in Skyward so that whenever we start pulling reports for PM3, we can disaggregate that data and look at students that actually started on time whenever we started in July and students that joined Wyamina Park as the rest of the year continued to move forward. So, it'll be an interesting look whenever we have an opportunity to look at that data and look at students that started on time when we started in July and then students that joined that school as we continue to move throughout the course of the school year. Looking at the attendance data, knowing that there are 73 fewer students, in 23-24, we were looking at 88, 88.42% year-to-date attendance. And this is pulled year-to-year comparison. It was pulled on July the 31st. As far as our numbers go, that's where all these comparable numbers are for attendance and discipline as well as year-to-date so that we can look at comparable numbers, those apples to apples. Looking at 24-25, currently, right now, we're sitting at 90.26% of our year-to-date attendance, which is an increase of 1.84% in our attendance. They have worked a variety of plans as well over the course of the last few years, trying to make sure that they have lots of incentives and things in place to make sure that students are at school each and every day, working very hard to make sure that if they're not there, we can't teach them. So, we definitely want to get them there on a regular basis. 90% is definitely a good target to start from. 100% is always where we want to be, but we're certainly working towards that goal. Looking at our discipline data comparison, this is, is a year-to-date, same timeframes as well. 23-24, we had a total of 706 office referrals. That is not disaggregated as far as how many students got multiple referrals as well. That was just a total number of 706. 24-25, same year-to-date, we are at 523. Also, making sure that we think about the fact that there are 73 less students than what were in the prior year, but overall, it's a decrease of 183 office discipline referrals throughout the course of this school year alone. The school this year has created a comprehensive PBIS program that provides ongoing scheduled incentives to students for academics as well as for behavior and discipline. This year, they rolled out a tribe system, it's basically a house system, to where each individual grade level has their own house. And within that, they earn points for academics, they earn points for attendance, and for representing the warrior way. The school's also part of a trauma-informed care pilot with the Mental Health and Wellness Department this school year as well. Looking at our teacher vacancy comparison from 23-24, last year, we were sitting with nine teacher vacancies throughout the course of the school year at Wyamina. This school year, we actually have six. The slide says five, but it is actually six. And currently, those are a first-grade teacher, a second-grade teacher, a fourth-grade ELA teacher where our content area specialist is in covering that class, a grade-five science and social studies teacher where we have content specialist in there covering there as well, an ASD GenEd class from K5, and an ASD pre-K position that we are currently working with Amerigis to fill that ASD general education. Amerigis is that company that we use to help with ESE staffing positions that are very difficult to staff. And so, we are hoping to be able to fill that position. We're in communication with them right now and working someone through our human resources process to hire them into that position. So, just an update on our fall intercession. As you well know from our calendar, that's non-traditional. They did have a 10-day span that they were off-school that was not aligned with our traditional calendar that we have. Within that, we made a statement to parents that we would offer a non-academic time for them to be able to come onto the school campus as a safe place where we would be able to offer food as well as offer, you know, incentives and academic enrichment and remediation. From that, we also had a hurricane that fell in those timeframes as well that put us off for a couple of days, so this is eight days in total. This shows you the average student attendance for each one of those days. And as you can see, it started off on September the 23rd with 151 students in attendance and began to decline to where we had at the end, on October the 4th, 131 students that were in attendance. Just for information for the board, this was an item that we do not receive FTE funding for, and so, covering that cost is something that I worked very closely with Ms. Boston Ellison. For your information, the grand total for those eight days to staff the school to, and this does not include electricity, transportation, this is just the salaries that it costs to have that school open for eight days that were non-traditional, was $28,118.50. We estimated a grand total based upon the 80% of the FTE of the students that were at that school. That's how we estimated how many would come. We did have a lot of parents sign up to be able to attend, but the grand total that we'd estimated that would cost us for all 15 days was $120,420.51. So, quite a bit difference in regards to what it actually took to keep that school open. We'll be able to pull that data as well as we move into our spring intercession, which is a week prior, five days prior to our traditional spring break, that the school will be off, that we will be open as well and offering transportation for those days. I wanted to bring that to your attention because I think it's very important to pay very close attention to how many students are in attendance, as well as the cost factor that it does because this is not a budgeted expense that we had looked at trying to offer for our families, to offer them a, a safe environment for their students to be in if they have to work or whatever that may be. And so, looking through this, as we continue to move forward, we are looking for outside community partnerships. I know Ocala Parks and Recs has reached out to try to partner with us to see if they could potentially offer a program during our 25-26 school year so that that would not be a cost burden on the school district. So, I will keep you informed as we're continuing to garner those partnerships and to see if there's any possibility to do something a little bit differently in regards to that. So, looking at, we did do a district survey that Mr. Christian put out through Sky Alert. The school also used Class Dojo to communicate this to the variety of their families. It was open from January the 7th, it closed the evening of January the 16th. As you can see from that, we did not get a tremendous amount of participation from that survey, from the draft A and draft B calendar that was proposed for 25 and 26. There was a meeting held at the school on November the 20th where we had a variety of staff members, only a couple of parents attended. We had MEA, MESP representation, as well as district staff to look at what we had learned from this year from that non-traditional calendar and what we could look at the implementation for the 25-26 calendar moving forward. From that survey, as you can see, we only received 76 responses. Of those responses, I'm gonna flip to the next slide and I can come back, from those 50 were parents and guardians, 38 were teachers and employees, for a total of 88 responses overall. Overwhelmingly, they did choose calendar B, which I will be emailing to you after this presentation so that you can take a look at that and provide feedback as well for our calendar option. As additional communication to our families, trying to garner as much feedback as we could for our proposed calendars for A and B, the school sent an additional flyer with an additional survey out from the school itself too, to try to make sure that we were getting as much feedback as possible. From that, it was posted daily on Class Dojo from January the 29th through February the 3rd. It was shared daily through a Sky Alert message from January the 23rd to February the 3rd. It was posted, we posted flyers in the laundry rooms and the mailboxes at the local apartment complexes on Wednesday, January the 29th. We distributed flyers at Berkeley Point afternoon bus stop on Friday, January the 31st. We distributed in car line flyers to each individual car coming through on Thursday, January the 30th. We posted on the front office, the front office countertop on Wednesday, January the 29th as well. And then, every classroom had a flyer posted for the parent night event that occurred on Thursday, January the 30th as well. So, trying to put as much communication as we can out there to our community so they know exactly when we're starting so that hopefully our students, one, that we could garner feedback about, around that calendar, and also so that we could make sure that we received as much as we could and, and they knew exactly when we were planning to start moving forward. From that survey that the school put out, beyond just what the district did overall as a whole, we received 87 responses from that survey. 51 were parents, 25 were staff, and 11 were community members. From that, 61% of those chose draft B, which I will be emailing From that, sixty-one percent of those chose Draft B, which I will be emailing to you today for your feedback and review moving forward. And so, from there, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Gullett and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser. I want to thank you for your support of the school, and I really want to commend Wyamina Park Board, because every time I go, the collaboration that's happening and the way that they're working with the community to meet the students where they are in a very innovative model is very much appreciated. So we look forward to your questions.
Sure, I agree, Dr. Gullett. Ms. Hunt was so excited after her PM-two data came out, she's like, "These are almost like PM-three numbers for us." She was so excited, and the kids are showing tremendous growth. There's just an energy at Wyamina Park that is palpable, and it's not saying that Wyamina Park hasn't always been a really great school, but there's just a little bit different vibe right now, and grateful to the state that they've allowed us to be one of these pilots' schools, hopefully, as they see our data, and I know that she shares a lot with her counterpart in Alachua County that's also in this pilot, and as we continue to see this data, I'll be interested to see what the state chooses to do with it, because we are seeing a lot of success, and I know our original request was that we wouldn't just pilot one school, we could pilot two schools, potentially as feeder patterns, and so I'll be interested to see. When we started this, with Wyamina Park being one of the District One schools that I represent, I had talked to folks about what does this mean? So a five-year pilot is really long, and so my anecdotal thought was, if the state sees after year two or three that this is not being successful at all, we may not have to go five years. But if they see after year three or so that we are being incredibly successful, then who knows? Maybe they will actually allow a feeder pattern school to... Because if we have kids that are having such gain in third to fourth grade, and fourth to fifth grade, as we're seeing right now, just in Progress Motoring Two data, then how much more growth do we want to follow those same students on, and what that would look like potentially in a feeder pattern? So I'm excited about what Wyamina Park is able to do, and Ms. Hunt and her team, and just looking forward to seeing what this calendar looks like, and grateful that you and the school worked hard to get as many responses as there were. I know it may seem low, but whenever you combine the eighty-some that the district had with the seventy-some that they had, we're getting a pretty decent number based on survey, you know, five-hundred-plus students and you're getting a hundred-and-fifty responses, it's not too bad ultimately. So, and the overwhelming number selecting Calendar B, so I'll be looking forward to seeing what that looks like. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Campbell. One thing that I would point out really quickly, Chair Conrad, is whenever you have an opportunity to review that calendar that I'm gonna email to you after this work session is done, I would point a couple of things out. We have worked very closely with our Alachua County counterparts to learn from some of the things that they've learned from, and also to collaborate back and forth. So one of the things that you'll notice within that calendar is within, looking in July, so our initial start date is on July the twenty-second, which is very close to where we started this school year as well, but in talking with Alachua County and looking at some of the lessons that we learned last school year during the summertime as well, we did elect for a four-day work week during those July dates, because our district is shut down on Fridays, and it was very difficult to ensure that the school had adequate support on those days, and as well as transportation, all the different things that were happening. So we did move, there were three dates in particular, July the eighteenth, which is the first Friday, that's actually a pre-planning day, so it doesn't impact our students. July twenty-fifth and August first are the two Fridays that align with our district calendar, that ensure that we are running that school in accordance with when the district office is open, so we can ensure that they have an adequate amount of support. And the intercession weeks look a little bit different, and talking with the staff and talking with, you know, some of the parents that were throughout the community, they really felt like a ten-day window that we were looking at before, when we looked at September and early October, that that was difficult in regards to childcare, regardless of what we were offering at the school, and so we really looked at spreading those out a little bit more. So if you'll notice within that calendar, there is a week for our first intercession week is in September fifteenth through the nineteenth. That's the first five days that they are off, and that came from a lot of feedback from the staff as well, where they felt like that would be a very welcome break, not only for our families and our students, but also for the teachers and the staff as well, because it would kind of break up that timeframe. And then they have two additional intercession dates that are different, and they didn't want a full five days off, they only wanted a couple of days off, so it's October twentieth and the twenty-first is whenever, as talking with the staff, that they felt like that would be a good time for, it's a little bit of a break, it's a longer weekend, because it happens with a Monday and a Tuesday, and then they're back in school on Wednesday, and they're not losing that amount of time as well. And then the only other intercession date that you'll notice that's different than our traditional calendar is on March the ninth through the thirteenth. That's that week prior to our traditional spring break, just like it is this year, where they're off those five days prior as well. Other than that, all of our traditional holidays that align with our traditional calendar, everything matches up the same exact way. It is a hundred-and-student day, a hundred-and-eighty student days, a hundred-and-ninety-six workdays for our instructional employees, and so it aligns nicely, but we've really kind of looked at how we could learn from the lessons that we learned last year, as well as what Alachua has learned as well, to try to really work to make a calendar that works well for everyone.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fraser. Dr. James, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to know, I know we had talked, you and I, Mr. Fraser, about Boys and Girls Club. Where are we, if anywhere, with a connection there?
So we have been in communication with Boys and Girls Club. We are still trying to partner with them and work that agreement out, but that's something that is taking a bit more time than we initially anticipated.
Because I know we had discussed, and we asked for the rest of the board to maybe know our discussion a little bit, but Boys and Girls Club actually came to me and were talking to me about wanting to do Boys and Girls Club on-site, which is the model that I remember growing up in Orange County. We didn't, I mean, I'm sure we have clubs in Orange County, too, but I remember having Boys and Girls Club on-site. And so, we talked about that, and maybe during intercession, them being able to lead work, but we're still trying, I guess, to work that out, and to get to a place where, and maybe, hopefully, by the start of school next year, we can kind of have something established. I think that the club is doing wonderful stuff, and would be great for the community, so I would love to see it happen.
Absolutely. We'll certainly continue to work with them, to see if we can work through the various departments that it requires to make sure that that's an option for our students. We will continue to work with Ocala Parks and Recs, because they did actually reach out to us as well about offering our program during those timeframes, and so really want to make sure they're boistering our community partnerships to make sure that it's a community issue. When students aren't in school, it's not just Marion County Public Schools issue, it is a community issue, so working together to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our families is definitely going to be pivotal.
Well, I'm excited. I think this is wonderful. I personally love the calendar. I think that it affords opportunity for families to, families who have privilege to take vacations, to be able to take those when school is not in session. And I see often, people are taking these trips during the school year, and my husband always laughs at me, because I scoff at it, because I'm such an educator, and it's, to me, respecting instructional time has so much value, and so it would be so hard for me to like, take a vacation during a standard instructional time, because we have built-in opportunities for vacation. But this non-traditional calendar affords other opportunities to take a break as a family and go on a trip without interrupting instructional time. I love the calendar, I would fully support doing it district-wide, I absolutely love it, I think it is an amazing approach, and I'm interested to see how the four-day work week goes for, because there are other districts that are piloting four-day work weeks, you know, for their entire school year, not just for summer, which is really very out of the box, but I would, I look forward to seeing how this continues to go, and using this as a roadmap for maybe future successes in other schools in Marion County.
Thank you, Dr. James. Any other thoughts?
I guess, I guess, thank you, Mr. Fraser. You know, I was very involved in the initiation of how we were going to roll this out. I'm pleased with, so far, with how things have been going. I definitely am pleased with the communication effort to get this information to the community and to the parents as well. Based on what I saw, I saw, and as Dr. James makes sure that we saw the cohorts going the right way, there is great gains. I see great gains, and I see great potential. So this pilot, so far, is working, is working, and it's beneficial to the students, so I look forward to seeing future data, see what happens from there. Thank you.
Okay. Remember, gentlemen.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Fraser. Thank you, Dr. Gullett, for everything you did to qualify us to be able to be part of this pilot. The initial data is very encouraging, something that comes to my mind, knowing that Wyamina and too many of our schools actually have had a lot of movement of students, you know, they're in, they're out, you know, they're there for a while, they go somewhere else, and then they circle back. So thinking in terms of the cohorts, it's interesting to me, I would love to know which ones were the kids that were there last year, you know, through the whole year, and because if that is a fractured number, then it is even more a testament to the system, the schedule, and the quality of the instruction. So that's just a couple of thoughts on the cohort categories. Thank you for sharing deeply about intercession, because it is an expense to us, and obviously with hurricanes, you know, things were going to go down, but if we're going to offer it, we want the kids to show up, and as many as possible, so it was just interesting to hear some of the reasons why kids weren't participating, and what we might be able to do about that. An incredible thank you to Parks and Rec. It always makes my heart sing when it is demonstrated that these are our kids, you know, they're the parents' children, but these are the community's kids, and so for them to step up and think about offering to pull with us, that's pretty great. And then finally, as Board Member Cummings was saying, you know, the positive communication, the depth of authentic communication and outreach is, just looks like it's really paying off, and every time we do this, you know, that authentic pulling on the same side of the rope with the same intentions, which again, so, great stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fraser, thank you for the presentation this morning, and the first thing I want to say is, I'm just really grateful and proud, actually, for the work that the staff has done to communicate with students and families. You offered a, shared with us a lot of ways that we communicated to try to get input, and so I appreciate you all going the, taking the extra step, so there's every opportunity to get input from the community and our families, so thank you for that. I did have one question, is there a particular hurdle that we are struggling with to get Boys and Girls Club in? Because I know they also approached me, we had a conversation with April, and they're really excited to help in that area, so I just was wondering if there's a particular, you know, something, a difficulty that we have.
No, ma'am, I will certainly communicate that with the board whenever we are moving through this process. I'll continue to work with our departments and our legal department to look at our options of how, I know I've been in communication with their local present CEO on a regular basis, and so I'll continue to follow up with them to see how we can make that happen.
Okay, thank you. And I did want to add, for our intercession numbers, I particularly, I thought they were fairly good, and it's a pretty good amount of students that come up, but, you know, it did cost us approximately three thousand dollars a day, so, you know, and that doesn't count all the extra, you know, the transportation, all the other things. So, anyway, glad that you're working on some workarounds for that, so, thank you. Are there any...
Ma'am Chair, I do have a question for Mr. Fraser. For that intercession, and this is just something I'm requesting, can you tell me exactly how much was spent on transportation for that intercession? And the reason I ask that, because there's a lot of kids that walk to that school, they're in the neighborhood, so they, I would love to see how much is actually being spent with the transportation versus those that are walking to school.
Yes, sir, I will certainly have that information pulled and email the entire board that information.
Thank you.
I would assume it's probably a smaller fee than what you'd imagine, because Wyamina doesn't have a tremendous amount of buses. There are a lot of students that are in that walks, on that walk, to and from school.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Fraser. Is there any public comment? Okay. All right. Seeing none at this time, I recognize Attorney Powers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For members, I'm notifying you that the designee of the DGH Legal P L L C Law Firm has informed me that advice is needed regarding case number twenty-twenty-three, CA one-four-four-four, styled Tony Wilcox individually and as personal representative of the State of DZ, a minor versus the School Board of Marion County, Florida. Pursuant to section two-eight-six-point-oh-one-one Florida statute known as the Government Sunshine Act, on behalf of DGH Legal, I am requesting an attorney-client session with the board for the purpose of discussing the evaluation and/or compromise of said matter. I have asked the board's clerk to cause reasonable public notice of the time and date of this attorney-client session and the names of the persons attending to be published. It suggested the attorney-client session should be held beginning at nine-oh-two AM during a recess of the February twentieth, twenty-twenty-five administrative briefing and work session scheduled, or as soon thereafter as may be heard. As required by this statute, only the following individuals will be present: Allison Campbell, school board member, Lori Conrad, school board chair, Eric Cummings, vice chair, Nancy Thrower, school board member, Sarah James, school board member, Superintendent Diane Gullett, Daniel Blackman, staff attorney, and Jeremy Powers, school board attorney, as well as the designee of the DGH Legal P L L C Law Firm. I have asked a court reporter to record this session, also as required by statute. Her notes will be fully transcribed and filed with the board clerk. Upon the conclusion of any litigation in our settlement out of all claims arising from the matter, the transcript will be made public record.
I recommend the board hold an attorney-client session pursuant to section two-eight-six-zero-one-one Florida statute to discuss the pending matter. If there is, if there are no objections, the attorney-client session should occur during a recess of the February twentieth, twenty-twenty-five administrative briefing and work session starting at nine-oh-two AM, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard. Yes?
My understanding is Dr. Gullett's not attending that work session, so I don't know that she should be published, I mean, she can certainly share her calendar, but I think what I'm remembering is that day we were talking about the internal audit, which was a board item, and Dr. Gullett had a conflict, and so I don't know that she should be included in the...
Her attendance is not mandatory, but her representatives can be there.
Okay.
This is a board decision ultimately, but it's, informationally, she's invited.
Okay. I just wanted, you said it was something about publication and the people who were attending, so I just wanted to make sure that was...
Those are the, yeah, those are the people who are authorized to attend.
Okay.
All right. And with that, board, we're gonna head into public comments, and, Attorney Powers, you took a breath, anything else to share?
No.
Okay, you're good. I just want to make sure that we didn't have anything else you needed to share with us. Board, today, I would like to go first, just because we have a matter we need to discuss about holding our board meetings and where that location would be. There's been an opportunity for us to continue use of the County Commissioner's Building for board meetings only, and so I wanted to open up, I know there were a few concerns brought forward, at least to me, concerning the use of that building, and so I just wanted to open up the floor to have conversation.
I can go first?
Yes, sir. Dr. James?
Thank you. I, obviously, we found out with, at least for me, I found out with the calendar invite update from our board clerk, and so I wasn't aware that we were changing our location, and I think I would have appreciated the opportunity to have board discussion about the location, public, not just for the board, as, not just the five of us attend, but the superintendent, our clerk, the attorney, and then some of our staff come to those meetings at the county commissions that we've experienced this last month, including Mr. Christian, and then the staff that present. So to have that discussion, for us all to come to a best decision, but also for the public to know where we are gonna be, and so it's my understanding that we've had a shift and a change for as soon as next Tuesday, which causes me pause and hesitation, because I don't know that we have done a very good job of publicly relaying that information to the individuals who would come to a board meeting. My other reservations reside just around the functionality of that space and the county commission's work, and the way in which we will navigate into their work. Is there a cost to rent the space? Who's paying for their staff to stay late? What will happen if their meeting... What will happen if their meetings go beyond our start time of, I think, 5:00 o'clock was kind of our, really the latest, we wanted to get into the space? So, I have questions about how we'll navigate that as a board. And this board member just wants to say, I don't, I do not want this board to put ourselves in a position personally, where we are limiting the work of another publicly elected board. And so, understanding that their meetings sometimes go pretty late due to complexities of conversations, I would like to understand how we're going to not intrude on their work as a publicly elected board as well, sharing the same evening.
Thank you, Dr. James. And, board, I wanted to tell you, this was tricky, and I don't know that I navigated it in the best way I should have, and so, I apologize for that. Because of the timeline and when I was going to see you and bring this forward for public conversation, I in no way, shape, or form was not trying to be transparent. And so, I offer any and all conversation. I too, it's important to me that our staff and the public knows where we are meeting, and so, I just, I just wanted you all to know that there was no ill intent in how this conversation came forward. It was a tight timeline, the opportunity came forward, I was asked to make a decision, and so, here we are having discussions. So, Dr. James, thank you for bringing your concerns forward. Do we have anyone else that would like to share?
Madam Chair.
Reverend Cummings?
I want, let me, let me say this. Thank you for being transparent about that and saying what you were saying. I don't think any of us, at least not me, I didn't think, I didn't have any, think there was any ill intent in your, or decision. I think it was just a quick reaction to opportunity, and I do understand the, I do understand part of the reason why. Let me sit back, let me do this, because Kevin, I want to commend you, because I can finally sit back and talk and hear, because I don't know what you did, I don't know what's happened, but it sounds great in here right now. So, and one of the things, my concerns were, I know that you could hear better in that building, and so, I understood that your decision was partly because you were trying to accommodate something that was going on. But I'm, our, my, my stance would have been that rather than us move over there and utilize their building, that we get our system together so that we can be here. So, right now, I hope this is good, because it sounds good to me. And hopefully, we don't even have to keep having this conversation. But I had some of the same concerns too, as well as, are we going to be paying county officials to hold our meetings over there? And is, what's that cost going to be? And then, again, I also thought about the fact that when we held our organizational meeting, that the decision was discussed where we have meetings and the times that we have meetings. So, I don't, again, I don't think, Madam Chair, that there was any ill intent. I think you were just trying to do something quick, so I don't worry about that part. Don't worry about that part. But let's work this one out, because right now, we sound good. I think we sound good, don't we sound good? Can y'all hear us out there? Blackman? It sounds good to me, and I don't know if you can hear, Chair.
She heard me breathe and stopped me, so, you know, I think it's pretty good.
If we keep it like this, I don't think we even have to have this conversation.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. And yes, the audio was a huge concern and the reason I was interested in moving forward. But I didn't know we were going to have an audio. I don't know, do we have an audio upgrade, or things are just, it is very different today? So, thank you for whatever you and your team did, because for me personally, what it's, it's usually my challenge, board, and so, you know, I apologize that that sometimes makes it difficult for you, but it is much better for me today, so thank you very much. I appreciate it greatly.
Kevin, tell them to mark the board where everything is right now. They need to let, they stay set there, period. Because I'm serious, I feel like I could sing this morning, it sounds so good, so.
Oh, dang!
I'm not going to sing, but it sounds that good.
Taking us to church!
And I'm a preacher, so I know this is, and I can lean back and talk, y'all hear me? This is good.
Relax and get right in it.
Exactly.
Yes, Board Member Thrower.
Thank you, and, and I am grateful to the county commissioners for offering up the space when we needed it. You know, for me, we are the Marion County School Board, and whatever accommodations need to be made, and, you know, so that we can have a good, solid meeting here, then that's what I want, really want to put my money towards. You know, I'll just say, there's no place like home. And this is, this is our building, this is our board, and I do agree with Board Member Cummings, that, that we voted on times, dates, and location, you know, at our organizational meeting, and that was all publicly noticed. Now, for a temporary change, that's, you know, different, but, but I expect it to be temporary, and I'm just glad to be back. So, I'm, I'm really happy that you feel like this is working for you, because that was, it's important for all of us, you know, to be able to hear and see and participate.
Thank you, board. I just do want to share that, that decision, we, there was a lot of discussion between Legal, Ms. Martinez, Superintendent, and so, legally, we were not out of, we were not out of compliance at all. And so, I just, I want to share with, that with you, so that you feel confident in that. Yes, Dr. James? I mean, Dr. Campbell?
Thank you. I too was shocked to see the calendar announcements come across, so I'm glad that we're able to have the public conversation. It is sounding wonderful in here, so that's terrific. But I do think it warrants us to have a little bit of a greater conversation now that we're having this opportunity, because we have now sat in the chambers of another elected body in this county, seeing it being completely remodeled recently, as well as if you've visited the city council's chambers, they have also recently completely remodeled their chambers. I've advocated for a couple of times now, and I'll advocate again, this is the most proper opportunity for tech services to potentially build us something that is different than plastic tables and black tablecloths with black boxes, and it, it does warrant an opportunity for this school board to start looking professionally like we did the past month in January, where we had the opportunity to be in a very professional-looking setting for an elected body in this county. I'm grateful that, I believe, we have consensus, we're not going to go back there, because I did not like how it was set up with our student board members being up in, never ever on camera, ever, 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 except for the moments they would have a chance to speak, and that, I think, has been a disservice to them. So, I'm grateful that they'll have the opportunity to be here with us on Tuesday evening, within the, in that avenue that their predecessors and future student board members have had. So, I know I've brought it up before, it didn't seem to go anywhere the past couple of times I've brought it up, but if there would be consensus of the board and at the direction of the chair for tech services, design something for us, whether it's on wheels, I know it, it, there would take some work, I understand that, but this space that we have right now is wider than the spaces that we had at the county commission. I don't know that we need this much space per person. I, I think there's a lot of ways that that could be done. I would love to see something that looked, in my opinion, more professional from a government body than tablecloths and black, uh, black tablecloths and plastic tables.
Dr. Campbell, I wholeheartedly agree with you on that. I think that because we don't see in the near future that we're going to be moving anywhere, and so, this is home, so we might as well adjust to this and start looking like we're supposed to look, and not being redheaded stepkids, and getting those things in place that, whether it's, it rolls out, whether it's behind the screen, whatever, we need to go ahead and make that initial investment and start looking like we're supposed to look as a board. I agree completely with you on that.
Thank you. Board, I do believe that Ms. Dobins is working on some ideas to bring forward to us to further upgrade the space here, and so, I don't have a timeline on that, but I do think she and Ms. Boombach are working on something to share with us to ease the fluidity of, of the work, and also the challenge that we have of sharing the space with a lot of other people. Dr. Gullett, did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Dobins is looking at something internally, so really no cost. Board, taking you back to our first year when I was here, in trying to create a, a way for us to have workshops, our work session be more workshop-related, you know, we used to go on the floor, and it was very conversational. Also, with the distance and height here, what would that look like in this auditorium? Board, if you had, there's consensus, the team can also look at the setting here. That is not part of that, what they're doing right now. I know this has come up before to, to Dr. Campbell's point, so if the board would like us to do that, we can certainly look at options. I'm, I'm not going to put our schools on the spot, but perhaps our students could come up with a project, and we have great projects that they're creating, and we could look at what those options are if the board would like us to do that for this, because I do agree it's going to be some time before we do anything else.
I did see Ms. Boombach was taking measurements and taking note of the county commissioners' facility, so I do think they are ready, they do have enough information to get started on something, if that's the board's preference.
Madam Chair, and in saying that, one of the things, and I'm, I'm one of those people that just really will not complain about stuff, but my biggest issue has been with the dais, because when we're in a straight line, it's not conducive to me, it's not conducive to you, as the Chair, to visibly see all of us, because I can't see Ms. Campbell right now. And I know, that's not how it's supposed, supposed to be, any kind of curvature, so that we can interact with each other. And so, we've, some kind of way that the terrace, the tables always kind of get put together. So, I think when we start talking about this, that we look at that fact, that we need that curvature, we need to be able to have that eye contact, be able to, once we add those students back into the, the student board members, all that makes a difference, all that makes for having a good board meeting, you know, and not being, it just, it just makes for a better board meeting, better presence, better presentation.
Madam Chair, I may. And if I may, also, my recollection, and a lot of that with the setup, and I remember, Vice Chair Cummings, when we came over here, initially, you were the Chair, the setup had to do with not just lighting, but also being able to see it on camera, right? So, Mr. Christian is shaking his head. So, board, if, if that's, again, your pleasure, we'll look at all those components of a setup that works for the availability to see it on camera and do lighting and all of those things.
Yes, Board Member Thrower. And I'm really glad we're having this conversation as, as well. One of my questions is, because the move over here was supposed to be temporary, well, now it's years later, you know, here we still are, is this the plan for the foreseeable future, you know, to be here? Because there's adjustments that truly can be made to make for more efficient and communicative board meetings. I am personally proud of the fact that we put our S R money into the kids, you know? So, I'm fine in a one-room schoolhouse, as long as the public can come and the sound is good, and there's some heat and some air conditioning when it gets to be above 95. And, and I think that sends a great message to the community that I'd rather be good than look good. But there's also things in terms of making the meeting more conducive that do make sense to adjust as, as, as best we can. So, as long as I have some assurance that whatever we do here, then two years later is, now we're going somewhere else, then I'm all in on the conversation so far.
Yes, Dr. James.
I agree with that, and I, I just would like to know how much it's all going to cost, and, and just have that whole picture, because I have, have consistently, as I think the board overall has said, and as Board Member Thrower just said, we're prioritizing funding for our students always. And so, which is why we don't have a brand-new district office, even though that conversation has come up, because we realize that we can't build a brand-new district office when we have schools that are crumbling. And so, I just want to understand how much it's going to cost and what it's going to look like, because I don't disagree, if this is our home, and I don't see, I don't see a place like this where we're going to be able to continue to meet in this capacity anywhere in the future that's centered to our district. So, I, I personally, I like being here. I like, I actually love that we are a little bit more spread out. It felt very tight in there, and I, I really didn't love that our team was not all together. I didn't love that the students were off-camera, and, you know, we brought them on because we wanted them to be a part of this, and if, if I'm putting myself in the shoes of a senior, specifically in the fall, who is trying to get into a top university, I'm going to try to pull some clips from some Youtubes and like, see how I'm, how I'm participating in, in this board, and that room doesn't afford a lot of opportunity for that either. So, I will certainly entertain some options of how we can improve what we're doing here, for sure, to a degree in cost measure. Absolutely.
And just with that, you know, the good news is, is that it appears to work very well for the Board of County Commissioners, and, because it's their home.
Yes!
You know? And, and it's, it's great, and so fortunate we were, you know, to have somewhere to go. But now, with hopefully a few enhancements, we'll be able to make this our, our home for the foreseeable future, and I don't know if this is anyone else's vision, but it would be my vision down the road to see, because it is a duplication of space, right? You know, meeting places are meeting places, and wouldn't it be great to come up with a concept and a build that would accommodate even all three boards, you know, in a centralized location? I know that in Pasco County, they have a, a complex like that, and it's really great, you know, for getting around in. So, obviously, that would be into the future, but that would also be a tremendous testament to our commitment to the community, that we want to be together and have that one-stop feeling and opportunity to, to be close and not be duplicating buildings when we really wouldn't have to. I mean, this building's already here, so.
Okay. Oh, Dr. Campbell?
Thank you. That sounds like a wonderful agenda item for an intergovernmental meeting, to see if there is an appetite among our other elected bodies, to see if there's an appetite. I'll just leave that there. The last thing that I would like to say is, certainly, the intention is not for this to have a high-dollar amount attached to it. Certainly, there would be materials costs, potentially labor would either be construction academies at Lake Weir High School or somewhere else, or tech services. We could create our own design competition, however we want to make it work. But I also want to say, when Marion County Building Industry Association decided to have now two different locations, their first original location and now their current location, they've done that a lot through sponsorships and partnerships within their own partnerships and group within the association. At the Sound of My Voice, Marion County Building Industry Association, if you want to come in and partner with us, you hear what we're trying to do. You partnered with our construction academy at Lake Weir to bring them what, the program that they have there up to a, a different standard. We, I, I believe that, I've heard from at least the majority of the board, we understand what this looks like in comparison to what it could look like, and I am excited that the board is actually going to be interested in taking this on. Additionally, if the cost is a couple hundred bucks, I mean, let's get a sponsor, let, let's, if, if that's all it's going to be in materials. So, I, I don't want cost to be a deterrent. Certainly, if it's going to cost us $50,000, okay, that's a real conversation we need to have. But if we're talking a couple hundred bucks, maybe even $1,000, please, let's not let that be a deterrent for us to start looking professional. Thank you.
Or let's, let's look for sponsorship, but we also welcome community partnerships to help with this, because, again, we don't just represent us, we represent the entire county. So, our look is the county's look. So, there's other businesses or, or companies that want to join in and make, because it's going to cost more than a couple hundred bucks, Dr. Campbell, especially for the...
Yeah, if you've been to Lowe's lately and looked at lumber, you, you know.
It's going to cost, but, but we, we want, we want to be representative of our students, of our staff, of our parents, and definitely of our county, because the job that we do is very important, very important.
Okay, board, I, I just want to tell you, thank you again for your patience and flexibility as we worked through, I'll say, a glitch with location, but what I'm hearing is a consensus to have both our board meetings and our work sessions here at M T I. Attorney Powers, can you share with us what needs to be done legally as far as correct notice?
Yes, ma'am. Whenever we have a situation like this arise, where there's either an opportunity or there's an emergency, the board chair... an emergency, the board chair and superintendent collectively decide whether to move a meeting and then the board is notified. So that's what happened here, but of course, as soon as we have the opportunity, public ability to discuss it publicly, then we can do exactly what we did. Now, what we do, the very first thing we have to do is make sure everyone's noticed to the maximum degree possible. Now, where the maximum degree possible comes in is typically within 24 to 48 hours, and in some exceptions, they even said just posting it on the door the day before is sufficient. We have gotten I T. to post it on our website, the meeting updates for the current, what's up there right now says that the daytime meetings will be held here and the evening meetings will be held at the Board of County Commissioners, starting with Tuesday the 11th. Now, my understanding is, as of right now, consensus of the board is, we are going to immediately, even on the 11th, have all meetings here at this auditorium. And so what we're doing right now serves as partial public notice, because we're having that noticed in public right now. In addition, I'll ask the clerk to have it posted on our website for an update of that as well. And then for the meetings, as we advertise them for the future, well, any that have been altered during the time when this building is being worked on, we'll shift it back to being noticed for the future, all to this building. Sound good?
Yes, thank you very much.
All right, so just to make sure everyone knows that for us, don't show up at the county commission meeting, board meetings anymore, show up over here and we will, we will have all of our meetings right here in this facility.
Very good. All right, thank you, Attorney Powers. With that, we will move into board comments. Dr. Gullit?
Nothing additional, thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Ms. Martinez.
No, ma'am, thank you.
Attorney Powers?
I have nothing additional that I can think of at the moment.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Dr. James.
Thank you. I have something for Attorney Powers. We were corresponding yesterday about the sales tax committee. Would you be able to provide insight to the entire board about where we are with the sales tax committee and when those meetings are going to start? The people, this comes from, my nominations had corresponded with me asking for more details about when it's starting, trying to plan their lives, and so looking for information about that.
Sure. Mid-March, we'll be having an organizational meeting. I will coordinate with everyone's calendars to get that set up. That will not be something the board attends, that'll be something that myself, the board clerk, the board chair attend with the members of the committee. Then from there, we will give them, just like we did with ICROC, we'll assign their bylaws and have them discuss those, ask questions if they have them, and then have them discuss their future meeting schedules, and also select roles for themselves and get an overview of what their role and responsibilities will be.
So can I ask a question? So from my understanding, the people that we're recommending, they are not representative of the alternate, they're both on the committee?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And the rules are pretty much the same as ICROC, four times a year their meeting and...
Right. And there's one, we also will have one representative from the Marion County Building Industry Association, and I've been in touch with them as well, so that they can appoint someone for us. Yes, ma'am?
Oh, Madam Chair. Are the bylaws something that the board will vote on or the committee vote on?
The committee will actually, the board has previewed the bylaws that I presented to all of you before. There were modifications that had to be made and the board chair can sign off on those, and a copy will be presented to all of you. And then in addition, most of it's a matter of transferring it from a recommended document to a bylaws official document, and the content will be essentially the exact same as what you've already approved. Then the board will be provided with a copy of that, they'll be provided with a copy of that. If at any time there's a need for them to alter or amend their bylaws, they have a procedure that they can go through to do so.
Is it appropriate for us to know who others have already nominated?
I'll get a list of all those together and I'll circulate that.
Okay, wonderful, thank you for the update. My second question, I guess to Mr. Crivitt maybe or Dr. Campbell, we are planning to travel to Tallahassee next week, and so my understanding is that the committees will know their meetings on Friday at some point? Okay.
I'll give you the update.
Well, so just let me real quick frame my question. So my understanding from Ms. Martinez is that we are, we can cancel our hotels up until Monday at midnight. I, this board member does not want to use taxpayer dollars, nor do I want to stay in Tallahassee if we do not have a full day of activities and meetings on Thursday. I would rather drive up and drive home, that's just my personal preference. So I'm looking to see our schedule by Monday at noon so that I can try and make a most informed decision. So, Dr. Campbell, if you want to update...
Absolutely. So that was actually what I was going to let you all know. I've been in constant communication with Ms. Janice Seawitz, who is working our schedule. Committee reports and the schedule actually came out at 5:00 yesterday, so they are working today and hoping to get us our schedule by this afternoon. Tomorrow, at the very latest, we will know our exact schedule. My intention though, Board, is to stay overnight, because I understand as prior years have happened, at times legislators are like, are you here for dinner tonight? Oh, oh, can you come and join us at the governor's, whatever? And so there may be committee chairs or others that we have an opportunity to engage with that are not just our local delegation. So I will be staying the night, but certainly respect your decisions if you're not going to be able to do that. I know that at least one of our delegates is not going to be in the office at all on the 13th, so, and I think I may have already shared that with you, so I know that that meeting definitely will happen on the 12th. But Ms. Janice Seawitz does know what the intention is, because Dr. Gullit and her team are coming up for Wednesday only, and so she is aware of that, but she also knows that I'm intending to be there on Thursday too, in case there are additional...
Yeah, and I think Dr. Campbell does a wonderful job of representing the interests of the boards from a legislative and lobbyist perspective, so I feel confident with whatever conversations you may have on Thursday in the absence of myself or any other board member. So thank you, that's exciting, I'm glad we'll have that, and then I personally will communicate with Ms. Martinez, but the rest of the board, so you know it's Monday at midnight. So if you wanted to cancel your hotel, we have until Monday at midnight to do so. Lastly, Board, we, the work session we're having two weeks from today is a board, the only item on the agenda is, well, we have an attorney-client session now briefly, hopefully, and then we have our internal audit. My, I guess my request to the chair would be, I have some information, obviously the board is aware that I've asked lots of questions about owner-direct purchase and the history of our use of owner-direct purchase, and I have been able to kind of come to conclusion in the questions I've had, working with Ms. Boombach and her staff. And so I would appreciate the opportunity to be able to share that in a work session with the board. I don't, obviously, we don't have private conversations about things outside of public meetings, and so I don't need a ton of time, but I want to be able to provide you all with some updated information that I have received after working with Ms. Boombach and her staff. And so being able, I can either do that in comments in two weeks from today, or if we have made it an item, I could certainly share it then, because then I would be able to upload some information I would be dispersing to you all. So really asking for the items simply so that I can make sure that I properly include those uploads for you all to review ahead of time would be my request, Chair. And if, understanding we are going out of, some of us at least are traveling out of Marion County for a F S B A meeting that afternoon, so I'm not looking to take a lot of time in respecting our travel time needed to get to our meeting. And if it needs to be in a further work session agenda, Chair, then that's fine too, but, and again, I can do it in comments, but I think agendizing it gives opportunity for me to properly send you all the information ahead of time that I'll be discussing.
I agree, Dr. James, and I also, you know, I've asked about, for some presentations and informations on mentoring programs, so maybe there is a time where we can add, we can have those two things added for a work session?
I, I guess I have just a quick question about the owner-direct purchase. So is that something that is going to be only a board conversation that we're having and is not going to require any of Dr. Gullit's staff to be present, there's not going to be a staff presentation at all? Or, that's my only question about having an agenda item, because certainly, I mean, we've gotten a lot of information on owner-direct purchase via email, and we know that we weren't doing it previously. I mean, we understand that entirely. I think everything that we've seen, that that was not prior work, and this board has been very adamant that that is how we want business done moving forward. And so we continue to have change orders with information given to the board and every single board meeting, Chair, as you read, the amount of money that we're saving in sales tax on many, many purchases. So again, my question about that specific item, is it just an intention for board conversation or is it something that we're asking staff to provide for us?
Well, so this board member sat with Ms. Boombach, obviously looked at purchase orders, and then also went through pay applications and had conversations with Ms. Boombach and her staff about how we got where we are, and then understanding the impact and implications of potential lost savings that occurred over the period of time that I outlined in my request. And so I don't need staff to be here by any means. I think if Ms. Boombach wanted to be here to clarify anything I share, but my interest would only be to replicate the conversation I've had with Ms. Boombach privately, so, and the information she's already provided. So it's simply me sharing the Excel spreadsheet she's provided and kind of how she and I, as well as her staff, have kind of landed on how best to understand potential savings we could have encumbered that we lost out on.
Chair, I'm sorry, if we can continue. So, I mean, I certainly respect that you have delved into the emails extensively that we all have already received, I've looked at them as well, and certainly thank you for the research and the time that you've spent going back over what we've lost. My concern is, I'm not certain, while it would be helpful information just to know we lost X number of dollars over the course of a certain period of time, I believe that this board has already made a very firm statement that we're not going to do business like we used to do business. And so I think that, I'm not certain that it's necessary to rehash the past. We understand that we've had staffing changes in that department with totally different mindset that's been shifted because of staffing changes, we're all aware of that. So, I mean, certainly if the consensus of the board is that we need to have an entire item to discuss this at length, what we have already seen in email, what we already are aware that we have errors from the past that we have now corrected, I personally don't see a need for an agenda item, but certainly that will be the consensus of the board.
Okay, board members? Anyone like, okay, Ms. Thrower?
Yes, and I was under the impression that we were all getting the same information because that's what is supposed to be happening, and I've been following it really closely. And I look forward to having this rabbit hole closed, because what I have witnessed is a lot of staff time being taken over a situation where, over and over again, it's been presented that no board policy was violated, no procedures were violated, O D P, whether they use it or not, is always an operational decision. It gets, I feel like it's getting to the point where there's interference with the operation of the district, and that's the statutory violation that I'm starting to get worried about. There are counties that never use O D P at all, and that would be Miami-Dade. There was an attorney general's opinion that went out on that, that said although it may not be feasible to directly purchase all construction materials, the district could directly purchase a large portion of the required construction materials in benefit from sales taxes. So I'm wondering what the intention is here? I'm confident that the intention through the years has been to do what's best for kids, to get projects done faster, to get them done over the summer, to present, to prevent classroom disruptions, to do as much work as possible with a very limited facility staff, because the amount of time that it has taken for this voluminous amount of information that has been demanded also costs staff time. And if we're going to be looking at it as there's no excuse ever for not doing O D P, then we are probably going to end up spending more on the type of staff that we will need to hire to be able to do O D P in every single circumstance. To me, it's just not that black and white. And I will take, just as an example, I think it was a chiller at Oak Crest that was literally being held together by duct tape, you know? If the intention is to put what's best for the district and the kids first, instead of going on a witch hunt, then I'm willing to continue to listen to this conversation and put it to rest, because personally, I'm over it and I respect the interest in going deep. We all do that with projects that we feel could be improved or made better, but this has gone on long enough, and I think it's time for the whole board to get on the same page of what we're doing, why we're doing it with this O D P. There's been things done in the past that were definitely not above board across, whole cross-section of construction processes, and I am personally very glad that we are, have tightened up our procedures, our policies, we're moving forward, and that's where I am with this.
Reverend Cummings? Comment on that topic?
Madam Chair, Dr. James asked, if we wanted to make an agenda item or do it, if we wanted to be in board comments, it sounded like it's going to be in board comments.
Absolutely.
And it'll be addressed and we keep moving, so.
Works for me. I will communicate with Attorney Powers as to the best way to provide the information to the board ahead of time if available.
Okay.
And then my last comment, I wanted to just mention, Reddick Collier has expanded into having an equestrian program, and because Lake Weir High School has come up today, we, Lake Weir High School is building the paddocks for Reddick Collier. And so it has been a bit of a process, as most things with high schoolers are, but they, Mr. Manning actually sent me pictures this morning about with the students at work and they are building the paddock and they are getting it done, and I love that we are able to use our students and put their practical skills to work, not to benefit other students. So really exciting stuff happening at Reddick.
That is exciting. I did not know that that was, that Lake Weir was building the paddocks.
Yes.
That's very exciting.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Cummings?
Just real quick, this past weekend, we all, well, some of us were there for the Golden Apple Gala again. Congratulations to our Golden Apple winner again from Westport High School. It was truly a magnificent event. Kevin and the kids did a Mr. Wonderful, I think that's what they called him, Mr. Wonderful. They were wonderful.
Mr. Well.
Actually, it was good. Mr. Wow, that was it. So it was good, but congratulations to all those that participated, all those that were recipients. I thought it was a wonderful event, so I don't have any other comments, I just wanted to make sure we told them, congratulations.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Ms. Thrower?
Thank you, yes, just the Public Education Foundation and Kevin and Megan Magamol, when we think back, and you'll appreciate this, Chair Conrad, of what Golden Apple used to be, and compared to now and the level of celebration and the formality of it all, and just such a big night, definitely hats off. I can't imagine that the teachers did not feel anything other than tremendously honored and respected, and congratulations to all of you, you know, for making it that far. And it was interesting, because we were at Westport at the last second when Ms. Jacobs was coming back from that field trip.
Yes, yes.
Remember, and you know, she was just all about the kids and you could just see it, feel it, and the kids just love her, and so congratulations, Ms. Jacobs. I also wanted to acknowledge that we have a community member here that is also participating in Leadership M C P S. Mr. Johnson, you've been here for several meetings and thank you for having the wherewithal to take an even deeper interest.
And our Code of Conduct.
Yep, and he's on our Code of Conduct Committee and had the chance to spend a good chunk of time with you the other day at Maplewood and Hillcrest, which were two schools that were on the caravan for Leadership M C P S. And so just having these opportunities for the community to really see and value what we do and why... we do and why the needs are so great. And it's because of trying to serve each and every student to the very best of our ability. So thank you, you know, for taking the time again today to be with us. I also was interested because I walked out and I got the printed versions of the handouts today for my own reference, and congratulations to whoever printed them front and back, same paper. I noticed that, might as well. And then just finally, we've had some kind of random conversation about public comment guidelines, and this is definitely not something to come to decision on today, but I think it would really be wonderful for the board to come to a real consistent procedure that we actually stick to. Like the whole thing about the 30 minutes is set aside, well, that ends up, we, yeah. And work sessions, I believe it's three minutes, and in board meetings it's five minutes. I believe Board Member Campbell shared with all of you in our actions across so many other boards that there's, I think the average seems to be, what, three minutes for public comment?
Often it's two.
Two, okay. Whatever we end up landing on, I would like to see it consistent for both work sessions and board meetings, so the public knows what to expect. Because there are people that work hard to time their comments, you know, down to the last few seconds when they have a lot to say. So, just something to mull over, we can, I'll bring it back up, I don't know, you know, maybe Tuesday, in my comments.
We will need to be cognizant of the fact that we're going to have to alter some of our board policy.
Right.
In that regard, because we have a set of procedural rules, which are, of course, guidelines, but the policy itself that we adopted about a year and a half ago, that's the one that's controlling. It gives us a fair degree of flexibility. However, it's also going to be in need of updating because there's been some recent case law on point as well. So good time for us to have some discussions about that. And I would ask that we don't enact any significant changes until policy is updated. But as far as, you know, being able to be flexible on procedure, maybe even what we identify, if by consensus the board uses that flexibility for it, that's a good thing.
Absolutely, and it sounds like it's timely to have the conversation, and yet the consistency and the flexibility is, does what, is what worries me a little bit because I certainly, as a board member, would never want to look like I'm giving preference to one group over another, one public commenter over another. I know we've given courtesy to elected officials that have rushed here from other places, and we have let them speak outside of the time. But I just would really like to have a conversation about tightening that up in a way that doesn't hamstring us, but that also makes it very clear to the public that no matter who you are, you know, you're valued and you're going to get your time.
If I can, I think that a work session item is necessary for this because I think there are some nuances that we really need to work out. Because I know one of the things from FSBA I walked away with last time was, they do the 30 minutes before the work of the meeting is only on agenda items. And then every other public comment not attached to an agenda item happens after the work of the meeting, so that potentially most of the staff can go home and we're respecting all of the other people who came for the work of the meeting. And to be honest, I think that is the way I would like to see this board proceed, but we do need to get into conversation in a work session so that we can really hash out what the board wants to see. And then maybe that is in conjunction with adjusting a policy, and then we'll have to hear the policy and do all the things. But I want to have that conversation timely. I do as well.
Let's ask Attorney Powers, is the updates, are the updates to the policy ready and available now?
They are not.
Okay, because that's, I think, what is going to drive this bus.
Right, and as soon as we are notified they have, that those are ready and have been provided, then I can make any additional changes and items to them. So, well, some of theirs, there are at least two different case laws, case law findings that have come down in 2024 that alter some things about public comment. So those are the items that we're making sure that we're, you know, ready to update.
Okay, and so we're still in compliance now, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
However, I will notify the board that if, that if certain situations arise, I will ask the board to proceed in a different manner than is our current policy and procedure in order to avoid any conflict.
And any idea of a timeline?
Even risen in four years, so.
Thank you. Any idea of a timeline of when the updated policy will be available?
I can expect late March, but I don't, I can't be certain.
Do you think, do you think it would be?
And there's going to be a number of policy updates at the same time.
Sure. Do you think it would be a good use of our time to have a work session ahead of the policy changes being?
Well, yeah, we obviously have to do that. We do work sessions prior to each policy update. There will be a number of policy updates. I don't think this is one that in and of itself should be pulled out separately from the others. We will have a list of, you know, I don't know, anywhere from 10 to 20 policy updates on average that will come forth. You guys will likely decide 13 or 14 of them. You don't really have any particular item that you wish to adjust or discuss. And then there will be a couple that will be sort of the featured ones of that meeting. And then we'll have a work session to have you be able to kick around ideas and discuss, and then we'll move into the policy updates. I don't think it's one that we'd set a separate update, a separate work session solely for that. So in other words, every single time that we have, sorry if that got confusing, every single time we have policy updates, we have a work session prior, at least one, within which you discuss what those would look like and what changes you'd like to see. Answer any questions, everybody's got, you know, we've got the information there as to what case law applies and why we can or can't do certain things. And then we move on, and then there's a public hearing, public notice, and the actual policy adoption.
For the sake of the conversation, are we thinking the end of March to get it on a work session?
Yes.
Item? Let's do that. That concludes. Okay, all right, Dr. Campbell.
Thank you. Board, just because it's an email that I've been working on a little bit, and I'm sure this request is going to happen of the Chair and the Superintendent, one of the items for our board meeting on Tuesday evening is a job description that I've been working with Ms. Marant on, obviously not being able to see until it was uploaded. And so there are going to be some changes made to it, and there is a revised job description. So just making you aware if that comes forth as a recommendation, just know that, you know how I am with job descriptions, it's the athletic trainer one, and I was like, I just want to make sure that this all aligns with the National Association, anyway, whatever. So, anyway, we got that all fixed. But when you see that board docs item change, know that that's why it's changing. And I don't know if that means that it needs to be pulled, that'll be up to you, Chair, however you want to handle that. Okay, but that just happened. So thank you for mentioning Golden Apple. Grateful for the amazing work of the Public Education Foundation. Just on a historical note, it also was the 10-year anniversary of the Jenkins Auto Group Partnership. So I thought that it was kind of fun that in 2015, Bethany Crawford was the first teacher of the year to get a car, and she actually escorted out our Golden Apple that spoke, the gentleman that spoke from Danell and Middle. So, anyway, that, they didn't put that into the program, but I was sitting there thinking that, because I remember when Bethany Crawford got that Mazda 6. So that, it was the 10-year anniversary of that partnership. So 10 years of teachers in Marion County receiving a car, and then certainly that's now been replicated in Lake County and Citrus County and Duval County and other places. So that was just kind of fun. Wanted to let you know that I've represented the school board at the CF Nursing Center ribbon cutting, so with other state, local officials, many members of the City Council, County Commission, state delegates there as well, was grateful to be there. It was interesting because several of the partners there, obviously Advent Health and Marion County Hospital District and others, and the Board of County Commissioners, had contributed money, obviously they had a state appropriation too. So they're recognizing everybody for their money, and I made sure that I went up to Dr. Henning and said, or Henningson and said, "So the school district doesn't give you any money, but you have our students." So basically, our HOSA students are now filling them always, and I talked to a couple of them. So that was great to engage with our students. It is a beautiful new building, the nursing center at CF, so just wanted to make you aware of that and representing the school board there. Also, Friday, after Friday morning, truancy court was a significant eye-opener for me. I just posted my check-in, as board member Thrower does all the time, posted my check-in that I was in court.
Better feeling concerned, though.
Watching, watching, I did. Forty-eight cases, getting the idea of what Attorney Powers and the team within the district deal with, at least monthly, if not, I know there's another court date this week. So it has generated some conversation, and there potentially are community partners that want to start addressing additional issues that are outside of our scope. And so as that comes forward, if there is additional updating that I can offer to you, Board, I certainly will, but it just has generated some community conversation. Sometimes I think it's helpful for us to do, I know, I'm looking at Ms. Thrower because she always does her check-ins when she's wherever she's going, and I don't do it nearly as religiously as she does. But I do think it opens conversation for people really to know what the behind-the-scenes work is that's being done and where we are and how the community really can help us in some very unique ways that we currently aren't tapping into. And so our kids, that we always say are our kids, are the community's kids. And that we have them for a larger portion of their day than anybody else in the community does, other than their own family. And so how can we be partners with others that have their same interests in mind? I'm excited about the potential for those conversations. So, and excited to go back to truancy court. Honestly, it was a very heavy day for me to process the things I was hearing, both from parents and from students. And so I'm, I am excited to go back, though, because I want to see the potential progress that can be made, and then to see the accountability that also is needed in certain circumstances that's unfortunate. So those conclude my comments.
We have some hearings on Friday, but those are arraignments and special cases. I think the 28th is our next date, February 28th is the next time we'll actually have our regular truancy schedule. So again, board members are welcome to attend.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Real quick, I just have a few things I want to mention. First, my gratitude for the board members that were able to attend the Golden Apple Gala. This is the first year I've missed in a long time. We had an out-of-town wedding that my granddaughter was in, and so I was not able to attend. But when I got back from the reception, I was in my hotel room watching it on YouTube, and Kevin, your performance with the kids literally brought tears to my eyes. Happy tears, I will just say. Really feel even emotional just sharing that. It was just so beautiful, and that I can't imagine how great the performance was in person because even through YouTube, the love and dedication for our students was shining through. So thank you. And, you know, every year after the gala, Megan says, "Okay, next year it's going to be better, it's going to be better." And I'm like, "Oh," every year, I'm like, "How are you going to do better than this?" And so always looking forward to that event and celebrating our teachers. So thank you for all the work that's done there. Want to say thank you again, all the work that was done here at MTI, the lights, the new carpet. Board, you can't see from here, but the front of the stage and the stairs, they have new carpet, it's been reinforced, really, really nice. And when I think about that area, I'm particularly thankful because we have a lot of kindergarten graduations and first grade plays, and those littles aren't so great on the stairs. And so they go up and down those stairs, and so I'm grateful that that was, they were able to work that into this update. So thank you all for that. I think that is it for me. I just had a, I had a short list today. So, Board, we do have a school board meeting on February 11th at 5:30, and it will be at MTI. So I will, I will see you all then. And there being no further business, we're going to adjourn this work session at 12:03. Thank you.